So, welcome everybody to today's Strategy and Policy Committee meeting. As usual, councillors, if you need to leave the meeting, if you can indicate to us, it would be good. Morning tea will be at 10:30. And we'll go straight into apologies. I have an apology for lateness from councillor Paul. Are there any other apologies for the meeting? Can I have a second for that apology, please? Thank you councillor Conde. Now that we've got the motion on table and seconded, we can all vote. We could do a social experiment. That sticker does look like it's been peeled off. So that's carried. I call on members to declare any conflicts of interest that they may have in relation to the items on the agenda. Are there any conflicts? No. Confirmation of minutes. I move the motion that Strategy and Policy Committee approve the minutes of the meeting held on 18th of March 2021. Having been circulated, they be taken as read and confirmed as an accurate record of that meeting. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Matthews, we will now vote. That's carried. So there are no items not on the agenda. We'll move straight into public participation. And I'd like to begin by inviting David Pennett from Creative New Zealand to come and talk on the Ahotini strategy. Kia ora David, thank you for coming in. So David, you've got 10 minutes and it's quite likely there could be some questions and that needs to fit within the 10 minutes. Thank you.
Thanks so much for the opportunity to talk today. It's really exciting to be able to speak in support of Ahotini. Both of the journey that council has undertaken to get to the point where we are. And the opportunity that lies ahead to embed and put in place a high quality arts, culture and creativity strategy for Poruniki. So thanks again for the opportunity to talk. This kōpapa is timely and important. The arts community has undergone significant changes since the current strategy was adopted a decade ago. As the sector continues to recover and develop following COVID-19. The work provides a great opportunity to consider how council can best support the arts, culture and creative communities. And partner with them to achieve council's vision. As we know, arts, culture and creativity have long been a part of Wellington's unique identity. We're proud of them. We're home to a strong community of strong artists working in the community. As well as emerging and mid-career artists and creative practitioners. And national arts and culture organisations too, of course. So to ensure our capital can continue to be a place that arts and culture thrive, clear vision is needed. And we believe that Ahotini provides this. It's excellent to see partnership with Maori as one of the four key pillars of the Ahotini process. Or of the strategy. It's essential that Mano Fenua are engaged with the arts or in the future of arts, culture and creativity and Tafanganui atara. And there's a big opportunity here to ensure that Nahtoui Maori is well supported in our capital. Which aligns well with council's aspirations under Tautato Taonereo Maori to be a bilingual city by 2040. It's a journey that CNZ is on as well, strengthening and deepening our relationships with Mano Fenua too. So it's fantastic that others are on the same voyage as well. We think it's a strength that the development of Ahotini has been done alongside the development of the economic development in children and young people's strategies. Big overlaps, of course, between arts, culture and creativity and those in economic and social wellbeing as well. So it's great to see that those whaka have been sailing in parallel. And especially given council's revived mandate to support the four wellbeings. We encourage you to explore ways that those strategies can fit together as well to help achieve mutually beneficial outcomes. It's fantastic to see partnership as a major focus of the strategy as well. As supporters of the arts at CNZ too, there's a rich family of support for arts and culture. And we can't do it without each other. So it's great to see that the importance of essential nature of partnership and support is reflected in there. And that's reflected in the notion of weaving the threads together. Which speaks to a more cohesive and collaborative approach. We want to reaffirm our commitment to working with the council to support the arts community in Wellington. And we welcome the opportunity to contribute to the mahi as it rolls out. Especially our further discussion about what partnership might look like between us and council and in the context of the strategy. We also encourage council to ensure that there's adequate time for thorough and broad consultation. The draft strategy reflects that a lot of discussion has happened over the years too. So it's great to be able to move forward at pace. But equally making sure that council has an opportunity to hear from a wide variety of people in the arts, culture and creative communities. And also to assess, I guess, the opportunities that exist for other supporters and partners to come alongside as well. That's my prepared remarks, thanks to my lovely team. And my somewhat addled brain. So, namhenu ana and yeah, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
We do have a few pate and we'll start with councillor Pennett.
Thank you, it's always nice to meet another family member. Just two questions. Do you think there is enough space for Wellington and Auckland to have really strong art scenes without being overly competitive? And also, as I was just saying to you before, we need to do an action plan. So if you could think of three things that we could really concentrate to support artists, what would those be?
Yeah, I think there is certainly enough room and there's always room for more creativity. The concentration of artists and organisations within the two main, big large, Auckland and Wellington. Is, means there are a lot of opportunities that come out of that. But I think quite often it's seen as competition or risk and working together. We know that in the community, there's a lot of work and collaboration that happens between Auckland and Wellington anyway. So I think some of that competition is sometimes a bit out of, you know, we hold it in our heads as, oh, there's a risk that we'll lose people to Auckland. Or that somehow we can't be enriched by having two stronger centres for the arts in Aotearoa. But I think that, and I've held this view over a few years and a few rounds of different discussions and strategic consultations and discussions with the, with former mayors and councillors. Is that I think it comes down to Wellington being comfortable and confident and clear about why it's different. Why it offers, it's nice to see some of that reflection coming through in the draft strategy as well, you know. Are we to be the best city for a young arts practitioner to grow and thrive, you know? Coming down to that, distilling some of the essence of what it means to create in Wellington is really important, I think. It helps build that identity, it builds that support around what the strategy is trying to achieve. So that's kind of the first, actually the first part of your question. The second part, the three things. It's difficult, I think you'll get a sense of that when you're out talking to the community again, when they've got a tangible piece of strategy to react to. And I think you, you know, given how diverse and varied the creative community is in Wellington from emerging practitioners, community artists. Small arts organisations, large national organisations, the broader creative community, film, games etcetera. You'll get quite a range of views about how people can be best supported. I think that's the kind of the underlying thing for council to think about is how can we, rather than create structures or processes that constrict creativity and what the council might be willing to support, how can the community be enabled to create its best work? Some of which will be quite surprising and that's often the best stuff. How can we enable and get behind the community perhaps rather than curating from the top?
Me Foster.
David, thank you. Just picking up what Iona just asked about, which is the areas that we can make a difference and being confident about ourselves. And I think it's absolutely right that we try and celebrate every part of the country doing well. Just the role of government institutions, I mean, there was a lot of money put aside post-COVID lockdown to try and support the arts and culture sector. I think most of that went through MCH rather than through CNZ. But I just wondered if you could just give us a bit of a feel for how that's going because it feels like the rollout of it is very slow. And maybe it's because the world, maybe it's because people are going, what do we do with this? Yeah, can you just give us a bit of a feel for how that's going and any commentary on how it might be able to help better?
It was a big chunk of money that MCH or the government supported, is supporting MCH to deliver. I think it's in the vicinity of, depends how you slice and dice it of course with the money, but around 175 million. Other agencies were supported as well to do more of what they do. So we received a one-off 25 million boost to our funding, which our regular ground funding is about 17 million, so it was quite significant. Not setting aside the Lotto profits which make up 70% of our funding each year. And that enabled both us to support important national and important arts organisations who provide the essential infrastructure for the arts in Aotearoa through those tough times of lockdowns and reorienting and reimagining their business. But also a significant amount went into our grants programmes as well. So that enabled us to support a lot more projects from artists, arts practitioners and smaller arts groups as well. So that kind of ability for us to do more and more regularly has been really important over the past year. We've moved from a situation of having two arts grants rounds a year to having eight. So really ramping up our own performance and our own service to the sector and enabling people to get more timely consideration of their ideas and projects. So yeah, we're still navigating through what that national rollout of the broader arts and culture recovery programme looks like. Those funds are starting to open up now, but already from the MCH side of things, but they're already, interest is really high. There's still a lot of demand for support for people to adapt and to grow in this new environment.
And is there a timeframe, sorry, last question, is there a timeframe to get that sort of money out the door?
Though, it's a, each fund varies in its rollout and timings, some for sort of two or three years. But there's, we're starting to hit the end of the first year of having it and those main programmes, yeah, two or three years.
Kia ora, thank you David for coming in and for answering our pate. We appreciate you taking the time to come and court it all with us about this awesome strategy.
Namhenu.
Thank you. And now I'd like to welcome Ella and Brad from Youth Council, namai hara mai ano. Good to see you again. I know you've had a lot to do with this strategy, so it's really great to hear from you. So you know the drill, thank you.
Kia ora tato, koala takonua. Hi, my name is Ella, I'm the deputy chair of Youth Council and this is Brad. And would first like to start with thanking Kate and Sam for the incredible work they've done on the drafting of these strategies. It's been really positive to be involved in the drafting of them and being invited into that space. So yeah, on the child, youth and young people's strategy, we really love it. Partly because we're involved in the drafting of it as well. We'd also like to emphasise a couple of points. First of all, that it's really important to have a vibrant, safe and accessible city for young people. Obviously, we want to retain young people in the city, we want them to build their lives here. So it's really important they have a really positive space to grow up in and live. We'd also like to emphasise the urgency of having a youth space in the city that is resourced. So making sure that we have youth workers in there and we have a really positive, public facing space for young people to hang out. That is quite urgent. And we'd also like to emphasise the importance of embracing a bi-cultural city where everyone feels like they can come and contribute to council decision-making. And making that super accessible to everyone. On arts and culture, we also really love this strategy. It's really positive to see digital inclusion in there. It's really positive to see an importance on making spaces accessible. And we'd also like to emphasise the importance of not just making it accessible, let's say physically, but also making it accessible cost-wise. So making sure that spaces for rehearsals are really, really, really cost accessible. So even making them free if possible would be really good to see. Also partnership with Mano Fenua is incredibly positive to see in this strategy. And we'd also like to emphasise to make this a positive space for people to do creative things. We also need to have a really accessible city in terms of housing and affordability for living. Because that is one of the main reasons why a lot of people are leaving the city and just not being able to pursue careers here in the creative space.
And I guess just to reiterate, I think the other point to be made is that council is responding to issues that are being brought up in the community. I think that's important to acknowledge, you know, these are things that we're hearing from young people and out there. In terms of what we're seeing in the arts, culture, creative sort of space, we're hearing that attraction and retention of, you know, very incredible talent in Wellington is important, we've got to try and keep them here and also bring them into the city. We also know that for young people, they are saying, look, we need a space, we haven't got a space anymore, that becomes very, very critical. So I just want to acknowledge, I guess, council for hearing that and starting to pick it up. Of course, the proof's in the pudding for all of these sort of strategies. But I think it is important to acknowledge the work that council's done to work on, on making that go forward. Because a third of the city is made up of young people, you know, they are the future sort of today already in a sense. They're agitating, they're keen to be involved in the city and I think you're starting to see that reflected across Wellington.
Kia ora, awesome, councillor Fitzsimons, his pate.
Thank you for your submission and for your advocacy. I'm interested in the youth space idea and what do you think the kind of key ingredients are to make sure that it actually kind of gets used and serves a good purpose and kind of, you know, actually meets the needs of young people?
Awesome. I think one of the key points is it has to be a public interface, so it can't just be hidden away. Young people have to walk past and think, oh, I can go in here. It also has to be resourced, so it has to be a space that is safe for people and has the support that they need. And that is really important.
I guess also sort of there is a speed element to this, you know, we can't let perfect be the enemy of good. In the sense that young people have been without a core space and both in terms of Wellington Central Library, but also the likes of Courtney Central for a long time. Now, we have some great services already out there, Zeal and similar providing a lot. But a lot of that is also tailored, one, to certain groups and two, like Alice is, a little bit removed from sort of the minds of young people directly. And so I think it needs to be public, it needs to be big, it needs to be a physical space and I think it probably needs to be a physical space. There are lots of options already, smaller options dotted around, those are important, we can't get rid of them. But at the moment, there's not sort of a central location.
So have you got any ideas for that? I'm thinking like places like the old sports cafe or, you know, what sorts of spaces can you identify off the top of your head of any?
Any spaces along the golden mile are quite important because they're so central and they're also on lots of public transport routes.
I hear David Jones is coming up.
Perfect, let's talk to Bob.
And also seeing if it's possible to work with existing organisations that are already doing a lot of incredible mahi in this space. And seeing if they have the resourcing and funding to be able to do some of this.
Awesome, councillor Rush.
Yeah, thanks guys. And appreciate your hard work on Saturday, Brad. Just, I'm just curious about the hub as well. So what sort of age group are you targeting? Is this a place that would be licensed? Is it a place that people watch videos, play games? I mean, I'm just trying to really understand because we also have young children, right? You know, under primary school and all that sort of stuff.
I think, I mean, no, I don't think it would be licensed, is the first point. I think, only because you raised that point, I think the focus group, if you will, certainly talking to young people is it sort of from NCA level one up? That's sort of where the age group starts to switch. Prior to that, so we're talking sort of year ten and below, there are other options, both because they often have to be supervised, so that's a new element. But also because there are options that they are already in a sense able to access. It's the groups who are going off by themselves after school, you know, possibly after university or during university. So it's sort of your, what, 15, 16 through early twenties sort of age group broadly, I would suspect you're focusing on. And I mean, games and such and video, I mean, part of it's just a space to cool your own, to be able to do stuff. I mean, Courtney Central, you could just sit there and there were food options and similar around, but it was just sort of a base of operations. You could meet there, you could do different things, there wasn't anything prescribed. So I think there's probably some services that you can provide there, but also just a space is quite an important start.
Kia ora, councillor Calvert.
Thank you. Do you see that it could, I think you may have touched on this, but just want to clarify in my mind that there could be a potential to sort of house almost like a citizens advice bureau aimed at youth. Would you see something like that as part of the hub?
Yeah, we think that would be super positive to have as many resources available to young people as possible. So obviously, any of that would be really welcomed.
Yeah, and have you, because obviously a lot of that services is provided by central government agencies. Have you, sort of the work that you've been doing in helping with the formation of this strategy? Have you, and you did just touch on before about maybe partnerships, but I wasn't sure whether, are you talking public-private? Or you, you know, have you identified anything in particular that we could be focusing on?
With as much commercial acumen as the Youth Council has, hasn't really been our thought around implementation too much. Because we're not aware of sort of all the funding structures. But I think what was quite clear to us is that it's probably not something that council can or should in a sense do all by itself. Both in terms of provision particularly of services. And I think our point is that if you're going to bring services, you know, be it citizens advice, be it anything else. It's important to bring them in and to bring them to where young people are going, not sort of send young people to them. So there is a bit of a shared element, I think that the important thing there is having something get going is probably the most critical point.
Councillor Paul.
Hey guys, I just came from Ahi with a whole bunch of young people who want urgent action on city safety. I think, you know, in the media and we know it's an issue for a long time, but it's really blowing up at the moment. So I just wondered if you could do three things in the city, what would they be to improve the safety of young people?
First of all, it'd have a safe, free space that people can go to and feel safe in. Also improving things like lighting, improving the networks available to people when they're walking through the city at night or even during the day. I've been hearing a lot online, especially after weekends, of people being sexually assaulted in the middle of the city. And that is significantly impacting young people and their ability to feel safe through walking through the city. So having spaces and having facilities available that people can go to.
And probably related to that, having the right support services as well connected in proactively rather than reactively. So, you know, we have the right people patrolling the streets, but also the right sort of services at these sort of youth spaces and similar. So that when people need help, they can access it, not two weeks later, but sort of at the time or preferably before things get to a bad stage.
And education and consent and all of that really important stuff, yeah.
Otena korua, thank you to you both and to all of Youth Council for the mahi that you've done on the strategy. It's awesome and I can definitely hear your voice coming through on the strategy. So thank you for your contributions, awesome, thank you. Now I'd like to invite Edie from BGI to come and speak on the strategy as well. Namai, namai ano, welcome again, it's good to see you here and thank you to you two for the work you've been doing on the strategy.
Saying similar stuff to what Youth Council said, but I'm here on behalf of BGI and another group called Tiahui or Narangatahi. I think most of you might have seen this because Jill came along to our launch and took a whole lot to put in your kabi holes, I think. It represents the voices of 1,200 young people in the city who are calling for, yeah, some of the things that we've already heard. So I just want to start by, yeah, really recognising the council's recognition that young people need to be involved in the strategy. And thanks to Kate and the team for delivering on that and inviting us to be part of that. It's been awesome to, yeah, to see, yeah, young people's voices sort of shaping the decisions that affect them in the space. I think that it's really cool that the strategy is taking into account the framework developed by central government and utilising the voices of the people, the young people who are experiencing what it's like to be young in Wellington. And I think that will result in, well, has resulted in a strategy that's both effective and evidence-based and actually empowering for young people even at the stage of the development. And yeah, so the group that I work with, Tiahui, have been invited because they're, they themselves are young, but they're also representing those voices of, yeah, over 1,200 young people. And I think that our big push too is this youth hub. And I was really pleased to see front page of the paper today, councillor Dayan Paul's support reported for a youth hub. I'm not sure if, yeah, there was a quote or not, but yeah, that was awesome to see. And I think what we see is that actually this youth hub, this youth space is something that responds to a lot of the priorities identified in the strategy and in our research. It's a safe space, yeah, it's a place in the centre of town that young people who, that can go to and feel like they're not going to be harassed or, you know, anything like that. It's a channel for services and basic needs, food and provision, it's a place that can channel that to young people. It's an opportunity to increase programmes and events, it's having a house for these sorts of things to occur. And it's what the young people are asking for, so it directly is a response to youth voice, which is an empowering thing for them to have. So there is also a crisis of young people, young people's participation, young people's ability to have their say. And part of that is because they don't feel like they're listened to, so this is them telling you. And if that you respond in a way that shows that their voices are listened to and are acted on, then it will increase their ability to want to get involved and want to be part of creating decisions in the city. So I think there's lots of things and really happy to take questions on anything I've said as well.
Kia ora, Edie, would you just be able to explain quickly the survey?
Yes, they did, because it's so significant and it's, yeah, it's really awesome what you did.
So we started in 2019, a group of young people came together with nothing but an idea, and we brainstormed a whole lot of issues facing young people and thought that mental health, mental wellbeing was a significant issue facing young people. The group has been involved every step of the way in developing a research project that is by young people, for young people. So they developed a survey, they analysed the data themselves, they wrote each section of this report, has been written by a young person, and it is really a true embodiment of youth voice. And it's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's been quite a significant, sort of monumental effort from a group of young people to be able to organise and present this to you. So, yeah, really hopeful that it's something that you can take and afford.
Kiora, and we do have some more pata, councillor Penet.
Thanks for the work you're doing. Just wondering if you think our action plan is actually strong enough, because we've got lots of great aspirations, because that's really where, you know, the rubber does hit the road. And also whether you're taking a good gender lens on some of the city's safety issues too, that it's not just people being abused, but there's certain groups who are disproportionately affected.
Yeah, so I think the action plan, I think what we've worked with in the strategy is, yeah, it's quite sort of high level, and we'd like to see some real strong actions that, yeah, directly respond to some of these things and have an avenue for, I suppose, accountability for those action points and what's in the strategy as well. In terms of the gender lens, sorry, I'm not quite sure.
The point being that it's young women and trans people that are being assaulted, generally by straight men. So what are we going to do about that? Because you can do all the lighting you want, but...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, so I think the voices of young women and young people from the Rainbow Community have been represented in our findings. They have said that having a space would be a beneficial thing for them. Obviously, it's not a one sort of silver bullet kind of issue, and there's lots of things that Ella has identified as well in terms of education and lighting and all those sorts of things. But I think the more, the more, and I think within a space, if that space is regulated so that it is, you know, that is safe in that space, that there isn't that sort of thing happening in this place, it will be, yeah, one step along that journey, yeah.
Councillor Rush.
Thanks very much, Eri. I guess my question to you is what do you think has disappeared from our landscape that used to fill this hole? And I'm thinking, when I was a younger man, I went to the BGI Institute on Tasman Street, and that had a lot of facilities, YMCA's, that used to be all over the place and had good, safe places for kids. So I'm just wondering, is that the sort of thing that's now not part of our landscape and we need to replace it with a 21st century sort of...
Yeah, I think so. And I think the young people often refer to Reading Cinema as something that they used to actually have. Now, there was, that was literally just a space. There were a couple of food things, and I think there was a table tennis table and things in there at some stages, but it was literally just a space that is now not available for them. It was inside, you know, there's all that kind of basic stuff around getting out of the cold and all that. The library was another space that young people used. But I think the, yeah, the thing that young people are saying most to me is that it's got to be not just a, not just directly a service for, like a mental health service or something like that, but it's a place, first and foremost, that young people want to come to. There's something there that brings them in, it's encouraging and it's exciting and it's fun, and then there's channels from that that can allow young people to access the support they need. But it brings them in and it provides an opportunity for there to be less stigma around accessing something that is beneficial for their wellbeing, I suppose, but yeah.
Councillor Neil.
Kiora, thank you, Eri. One of the principles of the strategy and the framework here is to ensure that it's a living document, that it keeps up with the times. How would you see, I noticed on your priorities to include the voices of Ngarangatahi, Maori and youth wellbeing plans, how could we continue that engagement to ensure that our plans and aspirations are always staying current?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of work to do around young people being able to have their say in democratic processes, I suppose. New Zealand as a whole doesn't do it that well, but I think what we can do is look at where the relationships, where are the relationships that young people have already and utilising those relationships? Because I think the biggest thing is that young people will tell someone that they have a relationship with, but they might not tell Neer Foster what they think if they don't know him personally, you know? There's that thing about utilising relationships, utilising community organisations and things like that, so that the voices that they hear are the most, yeah, the most authentic, because it's, there's less power and, you know, that sort of stuff.
Otenaki, thank you so much, Eri, for coming in and sharing your vikado with us and for the work that you've been doing, it's very impressive. Thank you. All right, I'd like to now welcome Alex Gray, who wants to come and talk to us about Brooklyn and cycleways. Kiora, Alex, so you have five minutes, and if there are questions that will fit within the five minutes, thank you.
Thank you very much. I've taken this opportunity today as a concerned Brooklyn resident, so I'm not representing Automobile Association or anybody else who I've also represented at council meetings. As a long-time Brooklyn cyclist and motorist, I've asked to speak today regarding my concerns regarding the design process for the proposed cycleway on Brooklyn Road. My concerns are, one, I strongly support new cycleways as I cycle from Connaught Terrace to Victoria Street every workday. I fully support properly designed cycle lanes to separate cyclists from motor vehicles. The existing wide road layout on Brooklyn Hill functions well for me as a cyclist. However, Webb-Willers Street intersection is the most dangerous section for me to negotiate by cycle on my way home, and that's not in the proposal that we're currently looking at. Proposed cycleway was first mooted during last year's COVID-19 level three lockdown. Only one option was presented. During a June 2020 Zoom consultation, I asked why the passing lane on Brooklyn Road needed to be closed when there was room for a two-metre-wide cycle lane if the paint markings were moved. Council engineer Joe Hewitt advised WCC did not want to have to alter the paint markings. There are 7,000 motor vehicles going up Brooklyn Road every day and about 150 cyclists. I consider if the passing lane is closed, there will be significant delays to motor vehicles, including emergency vehicles, who will be unable to pass a slower vehicle on Brooklyn Hill. Note, Brooklyn Road is the main access to the three landfills on Ophirro Road. The recent co-design meeting was unsatisfactory, as only one option was presented and the invited participants did not include all parties affected by the proposal. Subsequently, the option of a shared path on the west side has been marked not viable as the current budget is insufficient. This option is significantly safer than the proposed option on the east side, as there are no intersections for cyclists to cross. There appears to be an indecent haste to implement any trial cycle lane by the 30th of June 2021 deadline issued by NZTA. This is not good practice or use of taxpayer or ratepayer funds, and I have suggested on more than one occasion that WCC should ask NZTA for an extension to the 30th of June 2021 deadline. There are significant safety issues for both pedestrians and cyclists with either of the two options currently proposed. I inquired at the Brooklyn Community Centre last Saturday and asked Hugh from council if a safety audit had been carried out on the two options, which are really only one option within alternative layouts. His response was that a safety audit would be done at the detailed design stage. In my view, this should have been done already and any safety issues mitigated before going out for further consultation. The current two options are not listed on the normal WCC Have Your Say webpage and instead are listed on the Innovative Streets webpage, which many people have no knowledge of. There is no timeframe for how long the trial will be in place for and what criteria will be used to judge success. This information should have been finalised during earlier consultations. I request the council review this unsatisfactory design process and start the design process again to investigate providing a safer cycling facility on Brooklyn Hill. I have to say, in 20 years submitting in front of council members, this design process is probably the most unsatisfactory I've struck. Happy to answer any questions, although you've got two minutes.
There are a couple of pata, councillor Phone first.
Kiora, Alex, and thank you for coming, you've raised some good points. I guess, just given that this is a trial that can be modified once implemented, that's the purpose, are you saying that you don't want this trial to proceed?
Yes, I am, because I don't believe the passing lane should be closed, and I don't believe it's good use of ratepayer and taxpayer funds to spend a lot of money on something which may only last a couple of weeks if there's a big traffic jam.
Can I just ask one more question? So we've got, you know, I'm really aware of a lot of young people who are trying to get to and from school, they need to go over Bidwell Street and down to Wellington High. Are you really wanting to say to them that you don't want a trial for this hill to enable them to get to and from school safely? Or to try it where it's unsafe at the moment?
I don't believe the options proposed are actually safe. I haven't had a safety audit. If you have a traffic, if you have a cycle lane going up Brooklyn Hill close to the bus stop at Bidwell Street, there's a risk that if there's a large double-decker bus parked, that the cyclist coming up on the inside won't be seen by a right-turning vehicle into Bidwell Street and will get wiped out. So, sorry. What I'm saying is the process is too rushed. I've said several times that the deadline of 30th of June 2021 is unrealistic, and the council shall ask for an extension to that deadline and do the job properly.
Thank you, Alex.
Kiora, Alex, unfortunately, we've run out of time for more questions, but thank you for coming in to court with us. I'd like to now welcome Gregory Crott, who would like to come and talk to us about Brooklyn Cycleway.
Kiora councillors, and thanks for the opportunity to come in today and talk about this. I'm a Brooklyn resident for more than 20 years and a daily user of Brooklyn Road. I first became aware of this initiative to install a cycleway when I was invited to attend a co-design meeting on 48 hours' notice. After talking to many neighbours in my street, I soon learned that, like me, none of them knew about the meeting or the proposed cycleway, and all were shocked to learn the removal of the passing lane and car parks on Brooklyn Road. I have since become aware that last year, there were meetings held with a small number of people on options for this initiative. Unfortunately, there has and continues to be a lack of publicly, sorry, of publicity to engender good public participation of all road users in this initiative. On Monday, I contacted the local Brooklyn Fire Commander and was told he knew nothing about the proposal, and there had been no approach from the council. When I attended the co-design meeting, I asked the council representatives what was the problem they were trying to solve. I now realise that was the wrong question to ask, and it ought to have been what were they trying to create. Much correspondence between me and the council officers has ensued since the co-design meeting. I do acknowledge that because Brooklyn Road is a main arterial route for thousands of daily road users, the design of a safe cycleway is challenging. Like many Wellingtonians, I am committed to supporting a sustainable city that includes safety for all road users and well-designed cycleways. I believe the current proposed cycleway that removes car parks and the passing lane will have an unsafe consequence for all road users. It does not resolve any of the issues at the four intersections that some cyclists say they have. It has the potential to create a significant impediment to emergency services. I believe it will also create a significant negative public backlash against council and cyclists by the majority of road users if it goes ahead in its current form. I understand that a number of options for a cycleway up Brooklyn Road were put forward last year, but the council continues to focus only on this unsafe design with no evidence that feedback previously provided has been taken into account. I am left with the impression that in the rush to ensure the funding provided by central government is not lost, the council is installing the easiest option rather than the safest option. If this is the case, it is not a good use of public funds. There are mechanisms to apply for an extension of time to spend this funding or redirecting some of the total funding received for this initiative. I would like to see the whole process slowed down and a rethink and redesign of an option that meets the objectives of being safe for all road users developed with the Brooklyn community and major road users, such as the truckies and emergency services. The road is wide enough in most parts to find a safe solution and achieve a positive outcome for all users. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, we do have a few pata, we may get through one, I suspect. Deputy Mayor Free.
Thank you, Gregory. Look, we do understand your reservations and concerns about this, but are you aware of the fact that it's, I think even after a couple of weeks, they're going to seek feedback and there's the ability to continually take on feedback in relation to this project?
I'm aware of that, but why put in something that is unsafe from the start? It hasn't been well thought, it's not a good design.
Well, I think if it were absolutely unsafe, it wouldn't be happening, but anyway, that's my question.
Councillor Penet.
Thanks for bringing your concerns forward. Look, I'm quite familiar with these arguments. There's often concerns raised around process, around that it's not safe for everyone. When are we going to build a cycleway in Brooklyn? Because actually, it's a really unsafe area. So have you got any solutions and, you know, that would meet your concerns?
So I have provided feedback to the design process and certainly on the west side, as Alex has just mentioned, using a shared footpath, widening the footpath would solve all the safety issues for cyclists. And that just seems to be not in the picture at all, and has been quite, to me, it seems to have been just discounted by the council out of hand.
Thank you very much, Gregory, for coming in to court with us today.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move straight on to item 2.1. I'll introduce it and then we'll probably break for some morning tea, but I think in the interest of keeping on moving, we'll get on with it. So this is item 2.1, Strategy for Children, Young People and Social Wellbeing Framework. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the amazing staff who have been working really hard on this, there are quite a few. So Kate, thank you so much for the mahi that you've done, working with young people and with so many different stakeholders to gauge where Wellington's at and where it can be and all the research you've been doing. And to Jeff Baz and the team, thanks for your work progressing this. And to the engagement team, who have also been very involved in thinking about how we can progress this consultation with the community. I'd also really like to acknowledge Olivia, who worked at council last trainee and worked really hard on this. She pulled together a youth summit, which was highly successful, and she did a lot of the groundwork getting us on this process. And to Jenny Reins and the team for their work with young people in an ongoing way. I'd really like to acknowledge Youth Council and Tiahui or Ngarangatahi for their ongoing advocacy and support of young people in the city. It's great to have their views represented today in support of this report. So this plan is fantastic, and I think it was quite good to be reminded today that this plan and this policy or strategy represents a third of Wellingtonians. It's quite, makes it quite significant that we are actually making sure that we've got some concrete plans. The background info was really interesting. I think it provided a really important snapshot in time, and it's important that we have that recorded there. I suspect the next census and the data that comes will probably show us some pretty scary stark realities. It's a pretty hard time to be a young person, particularly a young person transitioning out of school into the workforce. We know that people are struggling to find jobs and that young people starting out with no work experience, it's much harder when you're competing against a workforce of people with experience. They can't go on the OEs at the moment, you know, there's a lot of things that are changing for young people and it's pretty tough when it's out of your control. So there are things we can do to make this city really cool and enjoyable for people while they're here. And I think the other thing with the background info that was really awesome was the seeing what council's already doing for young people in the city. It's actually really impressive, and councillors expressed it on Tuesday when they were asking questions, that actually council does a lot of amazing stuff, and you do see that in our city, and it's great to see it all together. And I think it's actually a really good thing for us to think about what we can do as a council to share that information with our city, particularly with young people in a meaningful way. And so I think there's some things we can do there to think about how you get those messages out. And it might not be the channels that we use. I really want to acknowledge the fact that in this report, one of the things that I really enjoyed was the fact that the voice of young people came through in the quotes that were used and in the way that the actions are put together, which is really important because this is about young people, so it should be, you know, done by and with young people. Just as a bit of a background as to why this report has come, in, I think it was 2015, Selya Wade Brown signed up to be a UNICEF child-friendly city as a number of cities in New Zealand did. And so when I got into council, I was curious as to what this was, met with UNICEF, and we started to go down the track of becoming an accredited city. But then quickly realised that that process was actually quite cumbersome and UNICEF, there were capacity issues at the time, so we couldn't progress that. But we decided that actually it was really important that we do have a strategy for the city, that we don't just kind of meander along. We actually have some conscious thought about what we need to do to improve the city for young people. So, we had the youth summit and one of the things that was really interesting through the youth summit was the feedback from the teachers, saying that it was some of the most meaningful learning they'd seen their children do from their classes. And because they were social studies teachers, it's quite hard sometimes to help young people understand the value of civics and what's happening in their city and how they can influence and have a voice. And they found that really valuable. So, I could see that there was a reciprocal relationship there where we got the insights of young people into what it's like living in the city and what could be better about it. And they also got the opportunity to learn about what it's like for a planner. Some of them looked at an intersection and how you manage and look at the different types of mode of transport that go through that intersection. So, they got to think about things from a different perspective. And then one of the other activities was quite cool. They were looking at their carbon footprint and if they did certain things, what that would impact in the day. So, they could see how they could make choices to reduce their carbon footprint, which was really exciting for them to do in a context of looking at the city. So, Wellington really is a great place to grow up. I had the fortune of growing up here as a child and I've watched my children grow up here. And it is a fantastic place. As a parent, I enjoy the various activities that the city offers. The city's compact, it's friendly, it's exciting, it's welcoming and proud of its diversity. And those things make the city really, you know, ripe for young people having a good time. But it's not that easy for everyone. The background info does paint a confronting picture. We've got, you know, rising mental health issues and I imagine we will see that pattern with COVID impacts increasing. Homelessness, we know, is increasing. Housing issues are massive for young people, whether it's with their families or young people who are trying to step out of home and become independent, being forced to go back home or live in environments which are just not okay. And just the affordability around living in Wellington for young people is pretty tough. Access to food, major issue across our city for young people. And we've had some amazing work in the grants area improving that. And there are just too many young people living without even the basics. And I saw that as a teacher, children who you just, you see them come to school and from the age of five, you can see the difference of having things and not having things and the opportunities that that brings for you. And as I said, the job opportunities in the city at the moment for young people are pretty challenging. And there's a lot that this council can do in its decision-making to help us retain the talent and just the awesome diverse young group that we have here at this time. So, council has a really big role to make sure, you know, that the experience is excellent and that the city continues to be accessible and that we look for those voices to be represented in the way that we make our decisions. The action plan has some really great actions in it. I was really impressed to see the real depth of thinking through the action plan. And interested about the library fines, that we are probably one of the only councils that is charging fines to our children and young people, which, and other councils are reporting that actually not having fines, the issues around it aren't what we would think they are and actually it's making it more accessible to young people. So, I think that's a really important thing for our council to consider. I have got some amendments that I've circulated to councillors. They're sort of fairly self-explanatory. The first one is that I own under Focus Area 1.2 around the youth hub, just to change the wording so that we get some action happening quite quickly. Because as we have heard from young people for quite some time, it is an urgent issue. We have many amazing youth organisations in the city, but having an active front is really important. I would challenge people around this table to be able to tell me where ZEL is in the city. You know, that actually, it's really hard when you're in a, whatever level of a building and you might not know how to get there. Because obviously, we are connected in this city. How, what is it like for young people who don't see that? So, having an active front is really important. It is an opportunity for us to work with our partners that we already work with. So, there's a number of service providers that support young people and I'm sure that they would be open to working with us to activate a space. Because as we know, you can have a space, but the people who are running it are really important because they engage and support people. 6.1 is around the youth summit. Sorry, this looks like it's in a slightly different order. It's all right. Do you want to go back up? Actually, I'll just follow it down with this. So, this one was about the indoor play space. So, last trainee, councillor Fitzsimons, and I tried hard to see if we could get a space activated for indoor play. Council years ago had the Capital Discovery Place. I think it was in the 90s. I remember coming to Wellington when I didn't live here. And they had the awesome vertical slide, which was really cool. But being able to do big muscle play inside is really important for young people and having something in the city where children can go and be children on a wet or windy day is really important. So, it's important that we look at what opportunities there are in the city to do that. 2.1, oh, this is about play streets. So, Mark Johnston recently did a play street in Japool Street in Berenpool, which was excellent. The street all collaboratively agreed that they would close off their street for quite a bit of the day, actually, most of the day. And I know councillor Foon came along and councillor Fitzsimons was supportive of this. That was great because the kids were able to be out on the street without the cars parked on the street and could get out their equipment. There were skateboards, bikes. And it was really cool because the community were coming together and just having conversations about things that were going on. And so really awesome opportunities happen when we come out and interact and it's great for our kids to see that that space, you know, can be used in different ways. The point of this one is to see, because obviously Mark had to go through a lot of work to make that happen. It's quite easy for council because we have our streets mapped out across the city as different categories of how many cars go down and what sort of traffic volumes. And how, some streets like Colter Sacks, which Japool Street is, it is quite doable if everyone in the street gets together and agrees. You can put road cones across the end and have an activity. I know at Neighbours Day, some streets do it anyway. But also just to have the process in place as to how to do that would be really helpful so a community can do that. And if you live in a street which isn't able to be a play street, you can identify one near you that might be and you could go and talk to those residents about it. So, I think it's a really important opportunity for our council to look at. Oh, so this one is, this has been brought forward by councillor Foon around prioritising road safety around schools. That did come through in the long-term plan last time, so I think it is really important that it's reflected in this action plan. Many schools contact us with concerns or parents contacting us with concerns about pick-up drop-off time and how we can work with schools to encourage children to be walking, even if it's a few blocks, rather than, you know, being dropped right at the gate. And if we can work with schools collaboratively, then we can help children become active and confident and that makes our community safer. And 6.1, this is around having some sort of set engagement that we have with young people each trainee and whether it's done over the time of the preparation of the LTP. So, we could have done something last year, looking at various priorities of council and just hearing the voice of young people and how those decisions would impact them would be really good. We've kept it quite broad at the moment so the community can come back and tell us what they think about that. There may be another idea. But last time we did it with year nine and 10 students, so that's sort of, you know, early secondary school age. Often it's an age group we don't hear from very much, but they are the emerging independent young people who are experiencing the city and seeing the things that maybe make it hard or less accessible. So, it is quite a good age group to be working with. So, yeah, those are the amendments and I will now open, well, I won't open for debate. We will have some morning tea and then we'll have some debate afterwards. So, we'll come back at quarter to 11. Thank you. Kia ora.
So we're just going to, if you can move to the transport schools one. We've just changed the wording a little bit under the request of councillor Pannett. That rather than saying that it's about around the schools, that it's about road safety for the journey to schools, so that we're not just limiting it to like outside the school, goes further than that. So everybody's comfortable and happy with that change? Thank you Jenny. So yeah, I'm now going to hand over to my seconda Tam. Thank you for the work that you've been doing and particularly in looking at city safety for young people and, you know, making sure that Voice of Youth is coming through on that. So I'll hand over to you.
Awesome, Kilda. Thank you. And yeah, I guess I'll throw it back to you as I start off to say thank you so much councillor Day for all of your mahi, making sure that young people are always represented around the table before Terry and I got here. Sorry councillor O'Neill and I got here. You know, you've always been an advocate, you were always active when I was up at uni, when I was a student studying, you were a visible person and someone that, you know, we could look at and feel comfortable to talk to and share our concerns and our dreams for the city. So thank you for helping this get to this stage. And thank you so much to Kate and to the policy team for putting together such a comprehensive and awesome strategy. And I felt like the things that we're hearing from young people yeah, are really well reflected in the strategy, particularly around some areas that I didn't think you'd go into, such as mental health and, and some of those safety things, because they are so complex. And I wasn't sure if we would kind of say, you know, put it in the too hard basket because we are council. But I was really proud to see that that was an issue that was taken seriously and well covered. Because, you know, we can't just continue to pay for mental health services and psychologists and councillors to solve these issues. We need holistic solutions that encompass young people's and everybody's everyday lives. So yeah, I think this is a really awesome strategy. And I'm really looking forward to seeing what people come back and say about it. Yeah, so I guess a few things that I just wanted to highlight from the strategy. I absolutely love that the central city was a priority of the strategy as well. Because even though we know that there are different issues for different young people living in places like Tawa and places like Strathmore, living in Newtown and all these other places in Wellington, the central city is a place that they see as a space to get together, to hang out with their friends, they can catch transport in there. But unfortunately, it's not the safest place at the moment. And it is in dire need of a makeover. And when I'm walking down Cuba Street and I'm seeing these young people hanging out, you know, I can just see all the kinds of dangers also going around. And so I want them to be safe. And I want them to have a hub where they can be together, they can be themselves and they can be safe. So I'm so glad that that's a priority. And I just want to shout out to all the work that's going on through the Wellington at Night program and through Don't Guess the Yes and all those programs that are bringing together the holistic needs of, the holistic safety needs of young people. And this youth hub is really exciting. It has to be in the central city, it has to be where all the action is happening, you know, young people want to be where it's happening. Like councillor Day said, there's this, there's this niche age group, which is like old enough to want to go out and hang out, but not old enough to go to, you know, the clubs. No, I'm just kidding. But who actually don't have anything to do. And so they hang around outside. And I think they're very susceptible and vulnerable to some pretty nasty things that are going on out there. So we need to make sure they're safe and that they have a spot to hang out. And I want to shout out to Zeal for their work that they do with that already, which is really important, giving that, that cool place to hang out and not feel like you're being like at school or that you're being like watched or told what to do. Yeah, again, mental health, massive issue for young people. And glad to see that covered. And I think it was awesome that the basics were covered as well. Because when people think about youth strategies, they're always thinking about what are some events we can do or like these very Band-Aid things. But I think it's important to acknowledge that for some specific communities in Wellington, particularly Rainbow and Takatapui youth in Wellington, they are overrepresented in homelessness statistics. They are not able to access food. Often they're kicked out of their homes because their families don't accept who they are. And so I think we have a role to play to make sure that they're safe and that they have access to those basic needs. So that's awesome to see that acknowledged. And I guess the last thing I'll say is it's awesome to see that we're going to advocate for lowering the voting age. You know, I think it's, I know I wasn't going to bring it up. And I know people are going to debate it, but bring it on. Because I think other countries in the world do it really well. There is dire turnout when it comes to local government, particularly for young people, but for others as well. And that's just evidence that's not in the strategy. But we know that local turnout, that turnout for local government is dire. And I think if we made sure that people were able to access civics education throughout school, because they are able to vote at the age of 16, we would actually increase that turnout and make sure that people are being able to engage from a young age to make sure that the city that we're shaping is one that they want to stay in, not one where young people want to go to Dunedin, or they want to go to Auckland, or they want to go to Christchurch once they move out of home. So yeah, I think that's awesome. I love how bold the strategy is. I can't wait to see what people have to say. And thank you so much for your work on this. Happy to second and very proud to second as well.
Kilda, councillor Calvert.
Well, not as a young councillor, but as having somebody having four daughters here in Wellington and having been through the youth period with them. I do support having, making sure that we've got a facility like a youth hub. I know the Reading Boys and Girls just were talking about how Reading was a place where they would hang out. So I think that it's, it's really good to get people's views on that. And also, I thought the, the additional idea of a youth summit once every triennium, I think that's an excellent idea to sort of crystallize some thinking and help us plan from a strategic perspective, rather than just a month by month or year by year. There are some things in the strategy that, that I'm a bit uncomfortable with. Councillor Paul talked about the 16-year-old voting limit. And I think that's more of a central government issue to start with, before we move into that. But I will, I will say though, that I'm a little bit concerned. Great ideas, but what's it going to cost? And I think when we do go out to consult, there needs to be some sort of ballpark figures put in. Because the reason we're going out and consulting on this now is to feed back into our long-term plan, which has activities and projects, but it also has costs. So we need to factor in how much is, are these ideas, especially in the one to three years, going to cost us? What should we maybe, when we're considering our long-term plan as a whole, what things might we have to stop doing in some other areas? Or what does that mean? Because a lot of these things are operational costs as well. So does that mean increasing the rates take, increase from 14% above? So I think it would be really good if there was some sort of figures, ballpark figures put in the consultation document about what some of this stuff means. And yeah, so look, that's probably the key point. But yeah, thanking officers for their work on this. But I'm really keen to see what, what the residents of Wellington have to say. And just also, just one final thing. I hope in terms of the consultation document, and it might be a minor edit, is that we, we acknowledge the work that our CCO, Wellington Museums Trust, which runs Capital E, does, in terms of providing a space for under five-year-olds and wanting to also return Capital E, as I think councillor Day referred to the Capital Discovery Centre that was previously in Civic Square, enabling us to have that sort of place, place space for slightly older children. So thank you.
Councillor Pannett.
I never realised I put up my hand. But no, I didn't.
You don't have to.
No, I don't have to.
It'd be nice to hear from you.
There was just a couple of things I wanted to say. So first of all, I just wanted obviously to give a big thanks first of all to the young people who participated, because this is your strategy. So thank you very much. And I'm sorry, really, it's taken so long. We've talked about it for quite a long time. So that's fantastic. And obviously to councillors Day and Paul for their leadership in the space and the offices. It's great to see a social framework. We've talked about this for a long, long time. And what essentially, apart from giving us a good foundation for this piece of work, will also help, I think, with other groups who are marginalized as well. I was always frustrated by our older persons policy. It was never really going to address the issues that need to be addressed. So that can be dealt with. And for disabled people too would be another area which would work really well. So I think that is a good thing. And, and the offices have managed to do this without making it as big as the Bible. So that is really, really helpful. Have, have, have. I just know it's very long. I think, look, council's taken some bit of a hit over the last few months. But if you look at that report, my goodness, the amazing things that this council does, even things that I hadn't even heard of that we were doing. And in fact, just even a couple of weeks ago, the staff were amazing when they helped a young homeless woman that I'd made contact with. Just like, we do cool stuff. And I think that we need to shout out about that. Because it's, that is what makes a city work. Obviously, it's really helpful to have these issues pointed out if we need it, around mental health, around housing, climate, safety, poverty and all the rest of it. So it's good that it's out in the open and that we can come up with some good solutions. I will say something about safety though. I am a bit frustrated by it. So really want to thank the two young women who did this great survey. Five days it took. I set to get 2,600 responses. We need to start talking about gender and less about lighting. Eighty-seven percent of the victims there were young women or identifying as young women. We have obviously issues for the non-binary community too, who are massively impacted by violence. And then of course, we've got young men who are also victims as well. And I've never trivialized that. So let's, let's stop talking about design and lighting so much. And about actually, instead of women being told to not go out at night and change the way their dress and make sure you carry your keys and all the rest of it, actually men need to step up and make it safe for us all. It's not good enough. This has been raised for over-
Thank you.
...
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 Thank you.
So we're just gonna, if you can move to the transport schools one. We've just changed the wording a little bit under the request of councillor Pannett, that rather than saying that it's about the, around the schools, that it's about road safety for the journey to schools, so that we're not just limiting it to like outside the school, goes further than that. So everybody's comfortable and happy with that change? Thank you Jenny. So yeah, I'm now going to hand over to my seconda Tam. Thank you for the work that you've been doing and particularly in looking at city safety for young people and, and you know, making sure that Voice of Youth is coming through on that. So I'll hand over to you.
Awesome, Kilda. Thank you. And yeah, I guess I'll throw it back to you as I start off to say thank you so much councillor Day for all of your mahi, making sure that young people are always represented around the table. Before Terry and I got here, sorry councillor O'Neill and I got here, you know, you've always been an advocate, you were always active when I was up at uni, when I was a student studying, you were a visible person and someone that, you know, we could look at and feel comfortable to talk to and share our concerns and our dreams for the city. So thank you for helping this get to this stage. And thank you so much to Kate and to the policy team for putting together such a comprehensive and awesome strategy. And I felt like the things that we're hearing from young people, yeah, are really well reflected in the strategy, particularly around some areas that I didn't think you'd go into, such as mental health and, and some of those safety things, because they are so complex. And I wasn't sure if we would kind of say, you know, put it in the too hard basket because we are council. But I was really proud to see that that was an issue that was taken seriously and well covered. Because, you know, we can't just continue to pay for mental health services and psychologists and councillors to solve these issues. We need holistic solutions that encompass young people's and everybody's everyday lives. So yeah, I think this is a really awesome strategy. And I'm really looking forward to seeing what people come back and say about it. Yeah, so I guess a few things that I just wanted to highlight from the strategy. I absolutely love that the central city was a priority of the strategy as well. Because even though we know that there are different issues for different young people living in places like Tawa and places like Strathmore, living in Newtown and all these other places in Wellington, the central city is a place that they see as a space to get together, to hang out with their friends, they can catch transport in there. But unfortunately, it's not the safest place at the moment. And it is in dire need of a makeover. And when I'm walking down Cuba Street and I'm seeing these young people hanging out, you know, I can just see all the kinds of dangers also going around. And so I want them to be safe. And I want them to have a hub where they can be together, they can be themselves and they can be safe. So I'm so glad that that's a priority. And I just want to shout out to all the work that's going on through the Wellington at Night program and through Don't Guess the Yes and all those programs that are bringing together this, the holistic needs of, the holistic safety needs of young people. And this youth hub is really exciting. It has to be in the central city, it has to be where all the action is happening, you know, young people want to be where it's happening. Like councillor Day said, there's this, there's this niche age group, which is like old enough to want to go out and hang out, but not old enough to go to, you know, the clubs. No, I'm just kidding. But who actually don't have anything to do. And so they hang around outside. And I think they're very susceptible and vulnerable to some pretty nasty things that are going on out there. So we need to make sure they're safe and that they have a spot to hang out. And I want to shout out to Zeal for their work that they do with that already, which is really important, giving that, that cool place to hang out and not feel like you're being like at school or that you're being like watched or told what to do. Yeah, again, mental health, massive issue for young people. And glad to see that covered. And I think it was awesome that the basics were covered as well. Because when people think about youth strategies, they're always thinking about what are some events we can do or like these very Band-Aid things. But I think it's important to acknowledge that for some specific communities in Wellington, particularly Rainbow and Takatapui youth in Wellington, they are overrepresented in homelessness statistics. They are not able to access food. Often they're kicked out of their homes because their families don't accept who they are. And so I think we have a role to play to make sure that they're safe and that they have access to those basic needs. So that's awesome to see that acknowledged. And I guess the last thing I'll say is it's awesome to see that we're going to advocate for lowering the voting age. You know, I think it's, I know I wasn't going to bring it up and I know people are going to debate it, but bring it on. Because I think other countries in the world do it really well. There is dire turnout when it comes to local government, particularly for young people, but for others as well. And that's just evidence that's not in the strategy. But we know that local turnout, that turnout for local government is dire. And I think if we made sure that people were able to access civics education throughout school, because they are able to vote at the age of 16, we would actually increase that turnout and make sure that people are being able to engage from a young age to make sure that the city that we're shaping is one that they want to stay in, not one where young people want to go to Dunedin, or they want to go to Auckland, or they want to go to Christchurch once they move out of home. So yeah, I think that's awesome. I love how bold the strategy is. I can't wait to see what people have to say. And thank you so much for your work on this. Happy to second and very proud to second as well.
Kilda, councillor Calvert.
Well, not as a young councillor, but as having somebody having four daughters here in Wellington and having been through the youth period with them, I do support having, making sure that we've got a facility like a youth hub. I know the Reading Boys and Girls just were talking about how Reading was a place where they would hang out. So I think that it's, it's really good to get people's views on that. And also, I thought the, the additional idea of a youth summit once every triennium, I think that's an excellent idea to sort of crystallize some thinking and help us plan from a strategic perspective, rather than just a month by month or year by year. There are some things in the strategy that, that I'm a bit uncomfortable with. Councillor Paul talked about the 16-year-old voting limit. And I think that's more of a central government issue to start with, before we move into that. But I will, I will say though, that I'm a little bit concerned. Great ideas, but what's it going to cost? And I think when we do go out to consult, there needs to be some sort of ballpark figures put in. Because the reason we're going out and consulting on this now is to feed back into our long-term plan, which has activities and projects, but it also has costs. So we need to factor in how much is, are these ideas, especially in the one to three years, going to cost us? What should we maybe, when we're considering our long-term plan as a whole, what things might we have to stop doing in some other areas? Or what does that mean? Because a lot of these things are operational costs as well. So does that mean increasing the rates take, increase from 14% above? So I think it would be really good if there was some sort of figures, ballpark figures put in the consultation document about what some of this stuff means. And yeah, so look, that's probably the key point. But yeah, thanking officers for their work on this. But I'm really keen to see what, what the residents of Wellington have to say. And just also, just one final thing. I hope in terms of the consultation document, and it might be a minor edit, is that we, we acknowledge the work that our CCO, Wellington Museums Trust, which runs Capital E, does, in terms of providing a space for under five-year-olds and wanting to also return Capital E, as I think councillor Day referred to the Capital Discovery Centre that was previously in Civic Square, enabling us to have that sort of place, place space for slightly older children. So thank you.
Councillor Pannett.
I never realised I put up my hand.
You don't have to.
No, I don't have to.
It'd be nice to hear from you.
There was just a couple of things I wanted to say. So first of all, I just wanted obviously to give a big thanks first of all to the young people who participated, because this is your strategy. So thank you very much. And I'm sorry, really, it's taken so long. We've talked about it for quite a long time. So that's fantastic. And obviously to councillors Day and Paul for their leadership in the space and the officers. It's great to see a social framework. We've talked about this for a long, long time. And what essentially, apart from giving us a good foundation for this piece of work, will also help, I think, with other groups who are marginalized as well. I was always frustrated by our older persons policy. It was never really going to address the issues that need to be addressed. So that can be dealt with. And for disabled people too would be another area which would work really well. So I think that is a good thing. And, and the officers have managed to do this without making it as big as the Bible. So that is really, really helpful. Have, have, have. I just know it's very long. I think, look, council's taken some bit of a hit over the last few months. But if you look at that report, my goodness, the amazing things that this council does, even things that I hadn't even heard of that we were doing. And in fact, just even a couple of weeks ago, the staff were amazing when they helped a young homeless woman that I'd made contact with. Just like, we do cool stuff. And I think that we need to shout out about that. Because it's, that is what makes a city work. Obviously, it's really helpful to have these issues pointed out if we need it, around mental health, around housing, climate, safety, poverty and all the rest of it. So it's good that it's out in the open and that we can come up with some good solutions. I will say something about safety though. I am a bit frustrated by it. So really want to thank the two young women who did this great survey. Five days it took. I set to get 2,600 responses. We need to start talking about gender and less about lighting. Eighty-seven percent of the victims there were young women or identifying as young women. We have obviously issues for the nine non-binary community too, who are massively impacted by violence. And then of course, we've got young men who are also victims as well. And I've never trivialized that. So let's, let's stop talking about design and lighting so much. And about actually, instead of women being told to not go out at night and change the way their dress and make sure you carry your keys and all the rest of it, actually, men need to step up and make it safe for us all. It's not good enough. This has been raised for over- This has been raised for over 60 years and, you know, the fact that we're just continuing to have these really big problems is unacceptable. I think the youth space will help and again, I'm sorry it's taken so long, there was an attempt to get one up in the grounds of St John's but that didn't work out. So I think a more appropriate location right in the CBD will be super helpful. I'd just like to thank officers and councillor Day for accepting that we have a segment on young parents. Terrible story in the paper today, just reminding us, 21-year-old single parent with a baby couldn't wait because apparently a baby was not a person. And so there are some specific issues and challenges which need to be acknowledged. I strongly support lowering the voting age. If you can become a parent at 16, why would you not have the right to determine social policy legally, social policy and everything political? It's completely inconsistent the way that we impose voting age. And in fact, even the drinking age with some education around alcohol and some culture change would be super helpful. I'd also like to thank the officers for taking on board my point around talent. I get a bit nervous when people start talking about we want to be a place where talent wants to live because, there's two reasons for that. One is lots of people have talent, in fact, everyone does really, you've always got something that you can do it. And the way that we talk about talent is it's kind of like, oh, you know, if you're an IT or an artist or whatever. People who do building work and plumbing and cleaning and teaching and looking after sick people or elderly people also have to have talent. So I think we need to be really inclusive about that and also just recognising that young people don't always have an even playing field. Some people get more advantage by birth rather than just by hard work. So I think that point's been taken on and that is fantastic. Thank you to councillor Conde, I really appreciate that because I, it winds me up that we just talk about safety around schools. The whole journey for a child or a young person should be safe, whether it's about predators or traffic, we need to make it safe. And that means that we need to deprioritise cars and we need to prioritise walking and cycling and really mean it and not, as we heard today, hear all the reasons why we can't have a cycleway. And I'm being very, very strong on the fact that cities need to return to, there is one thing where we need to return to the past, that a city is a playground, okay? There is so much space here which children can play. We spend all this time talking about playgrounds and maintenance budgets, but actually, there's lots and lots of play space. And if we make it safe for kids and for young people, then there's actually an enormous amount of space. And just the last point I'd like to make, I think, look, there are some good actions in there, but we need to really walk the talk. And I don't accept arguments around costs and all the rest of it because I'll always say, well, what about the cost of not taking action? We need to be more decisive and I'm trying to do that. I just was giving some feedback on a paper this morning and hopefully that we will all put young people and children at the centre when we are doing all our work in our respective areas. But I think this is really good. It's aspirational, it puts young people at the centre and everyone will benefit from it.
Thank you, councillor Conde.
Thanks, team. I'm actually going to be bringing an amendment to this, which, Heidi, if you can scroll to put it up on the screen for everyone, thank you. Apologies for the late amendment, it's not that I was being lax, it's that I literally had the idea while I was listening to Alarion Brad from Youth Council and Eddie from BGI talk to us this morning. And I was thinking about councillor Day's change to the paper where she was, she's, we're requesting a proposal come to the Grants Committee for a youth hub by December 2021 and thinking, you know, that's great, totally support that, but it means that we can't possibly have something off the ground before next calendar year. And when we're hearing from youths saying this is really an urgent, an urgent issue for them, was trying to think about what can we do that's, that's more going to address the very short-term issue. And I'm aware that, well, we're all aware of the City Recovery Fund, which was put together out of all of our grant pools to kind of respond to the challenges of COVID. And there's still $2.4 million unallocated in that fund based on the last update that I've had. Now, I'm sure that doesn't mean that there aren't proposals sitting in the, in the pipeline that might take some of that, but there is still money sitting there. One of the grants that we have already made out of the City Recovery Fund is to the Urban Dream Brokerage. And the work that they do is working with property owners who have empty retail spaces in their buildings in the city and repurposing them for different kinds of community or creative uses. And they're doing some really, really cool things. And I've spoken with them and they were excited about the opportunity to think about working with youth council on something, on a project that would be a youth space. And I did speak to Alar about whether youth council could work with the City Recovery Fund to find a way to make this happen. But it's really difficult for these small groups when they're, you know, working on their own proposals, trying to get them off the ground, it's challenging to kind of come into the grant proposal space. So it hasn't, I think there's, there's some great opportunities here that haven't quite come together yet. And so this amendment is really just to ask staff to step in and see if we can do a bit of coordinating to support this idea, to see if we can get it off the ground and, and see if we could use this model, not just this model, we could look at other ideas, but the idea of empty retail space around the city being repurposed as a youth hub. This would obviously, or a youth hangout space, I've said, because I think this would obviously be a short-term solution. It might only be for six months that the, that the space is available and then it becomes retail space again. So it's essential that it sits alongside the other requests that come into Grants Committee, which would be a longer-term solution. But I think it's, it's an opportunity for us to, to work at creating just a space like the Reading Courtney used to be, where it wasn't, there's not necessarily going to be activation, there's not necessarily going to be youth support there, that's something we can look at for when it comes to grants. This would just be a safe space where people can come and hang out like they used to hang out at the food court. I very quickly put some words together and put it in front of Barbara and Claire, thank you very much, to make sure that they were, they were all right with us and felt like it was appropriate and I got the thumbs up from them. So I think that, as I say, this is, this is not going to be the big solution to this, that's what, that's what councillor Day's working on, is how we're going to have a permanent solution for this issue. But this does give us an opportunity potentially to find a kind of short-term, quick and dirty solution that will get something out for our youth right away. And that's everything I have to say about it. Councillor Phoon is kindly going to second it for me, she was sitting next to me, so I was able to pass notes to her.
Can we get some officers' advice on this?
What do you need advice on? So got office, question from councillor Calvert and then.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from officers in terms of how this fits with the criteria of the City Recovery Fund and whether it is within the bounds of that, knowing that there is a criteria.
So I'm not going to be able to give you the specifics of all the criteria in this moment, I can come back to you on that. But if the request here is for us to go away and look at this and see what might be possible, I'm very comfortable with that.
Question from Fitzsimons, councillor Fitzsimons, and then Mia Foster.
Cool, I think this is good and I really applaud it, but I want to know if we can expand it to also include a indoor play space, which we've been trying to get since 2011 when capital E's indoor play space wasn't available and I think it would serve similar benefits. I guess my question is, would officers have any objection to this also applying for an indoor play space which has similar benefits but for a different demographic?
Through your chair, I'd have to understand what was involved in an indoor play space because my understanding is that the issue was the capital cost of the play and space. So I, I think my understanding is this is, this is potentially, and I don't know, using temporarily a retail space for some kind of drop in social interaction, a play space can take up a big area of physical space and would require a capital budget.
Well, the, I assume this would too, but, which I, which I support, but, and probably some operational funding. The one that used to operate under the bridge, which is where capital E was, didn't have a staff member, just parents would go there during the day and it was a, had a small amount of equipment, but you could probably repurpose what was in the central library. But it's something I've been asking for, for years and I just think if there's, if there's the ability to use that fund, it's a very similar initiative just for a different demographic.
I just, I wonder whether it's more appropriate to councillor Day's resolution? Could we look at that one because that gives us a.
That's pretty clear.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think you should do that, just explore opportunities.
I just, I feel like the youth hub's got a sort of a life of its own, but this, the indoor play space for children, which was on the agenda for a long time and I've previously passed resolutions, just hasn't had the same energy. And I'm guess if there's the ability to give some energy to it, and it's not concrete, it's just looking into it, I'd love it if it could also be included.
Well, through your chair, we're clearly saying we're going to explore those opportunities. My, I just need to understand what's possible with the remaining funds left in the City Recovery Fund versus that. But if what you want is for staff to investigate both, then it seems to me that we've got both of these things covered.
We could make it bullet points, so to, to develop, I might have to re, I might have to reword it a bit so we like request staff to and then we have two bullet points.
Question and then councillor, deputy Mia Free has a question as well.
Yeah, part of my question was the thing about the City Recovery Fund's criteria and sources of funding from that, but you'll, you'll come back on that because obviously you haven't got that at the moment. The other one is the Urban Dream Brokerage because this, that does seem to fit, I mean, the whole idea there was about trying to just activate spaces and it could be done in several different ways. So in your view, that fits with their, their remit? Because I, I would have thought it does.
Through the chair, what I, I believe I'm being asked to do is to go away and look at what the options might be and how we might be able to achieve the intent behind this and come back to you and let you know what's possible. And if that involves the Urban Dream Brokerage, and Gisella's in the room and she knows that team really well, and that's possible, then we will be able to let you know that. But I can't speak on their behalf.
I don't think we want you to come back to us, I think you want, we want you to go and apply to the City Recovery Fund, make a proposal and apply to it.
The Urban Dream Brokerage will probably apply, wouldn't they?
I'm just flagging if there's an impediment to us being able to achieve it through the City Recovery Fund.
Definitely come back.
You've made that explicit, that we need to look at other funding sources. So what I'm saying is, we will go away, we will pull together a proposal that delivers on this intent and see what's possible. I'm not going to speak on behalf of the Urban Dream Brokerage, but certainly what I know of them, it's not just arts focus, it's about community participation and engagement and maximising spaces and places for a variety of activities.
Very good, that's helpful. Thank you, deputy Mia Free.
So I am concerned that we are putting our energies into lots of different directions at the moment and I know that we're probably going to have some play space, really great play space in the library. My question to Barbara, I suppose, is, or perhaps to Claire, is if you put resources into investigating this, is it going to take away from other work that you're trying to achieve? How much spare capacity is there?
Through the chair, I don't think this is going to have a significant impact on the overall library project because that, you know, that's a large-scale initiative and we are looking at the resourcing of that over the next three years right now because we're coming to you next week and we'll go into the next phases of work. I don't think this needs to be a huge amount of work. I will get Gisella to verify that because I'm really speaking on her behalf, but I think in a short space of time, we could use Mark and the team, working with Kerry, to identify what's possible and how we might make it happen.
So it's not just whether it would take away.
So it's not just whether it would take away from the library, but would it take away from other pieces of work? Would staff get particular... Have you got the capacity, basically?
I think we should take it under advisement and have a look at it. I mean, there is no spare capacity, we're pretty stretched. But we can have a look at the spirit of this, we understand what's intended. It's the short-term aspect of it, as well as the longer term, that we need to consider, because without a question you've asked us to look at this in relation to the Central Library Project, and we have it in that context.
We're also further asked that we take the two things separately for voting on, so there's the option for the youth hangout and then the option for the indoor play space.
It's not very easy, that's going to add a lot of... Basically, then we will have two... We'll just create two amendments that essentially say the same thing, but they don't have the bullet points. Is that what you really want to do? Or does that... Do you... This is about consultation.
Not about consultation, it's about developing a proposal and then applying to a fund.
It does, yeah. I mean, it's up to you. I don't see why you would support one and not the other, but...
Well, I do have more... Personally, I have more favorable view of doing it for the young people than I do of doing it for children at this point in time. Because I think that, you know, I just don't know quite what it would... So that's how I personally feel. I'd like to take it separately.
We'll just speak to them, we'll discuss the amendments together, so there's going to be a seven and an eight, they will be the same. So you've introduced it.
Joe, sorry, Madam Chair, can I just ask another question? It's the context of the paper. While I am supportive of this, what we're doing is we're approving a paper for consultation. This is doing something which should really be inside the paper for consultation.
It's a political decision.
It's the scope of the paper.
I am open to discussing this.
I realise that, I'm just saying that it seems like otherwise we can tack anything we like onto any paper that's vaguely relevant. And that's probably not quite the way we should do business.
It's very much within scope, it's basically saying that we've heard a need and that the...
I get that.
The strategy says what it's going to do, but people are saying they want to see some work happening now. I'm not going to keep arguing this.
Sorry, Joe, I get that, but the point of the paper...
The Chair's ruling is final, and I'm saying that this is okay.
Can you let me explain it first?
No, I don't actually have to, understanding orders, I don't have to let you explain it.
Fine, but the point is that we have a paper for consultation.
Mayor Foster, you need to stop. I am going to accept that this amendment is coming forward today.
Can we get officers' advice on this? Whether it's actually a legal amendment? No, I'm sorry, but it is outside the scope of the paper.
councillor Calvert, I'll just remind you that in the standing orders, it sees the Chair's ruling as final on amendments like this. So you just need to settle down, and we're just going to get on with it. If you want to support it, you support it, if you don't, you don't. Okay, councillor Foo, would you like to speak?
The concept's fine, but just the process is pretty...
Yes. At the risk of declaring a conflict of interest, and as a former broker of dreams and employee of the Urban Dream Brokerage, I can tell you that both of these are in the remit of what Urban Dream Brokerage would be very keen on having a look at. But I think more importantly, I think that what council can bring to this without a lot of work is probably a couple of conversations and information sharing, and that would enable the people involved to pursue the work if that's what they want to do. So I see this as a great opportunity, and I thank councillor Conde for bringing it to us. I really think that we can gain a lot from trial spaces and temporary situations, so we can really understand and learn from them, so that when we go forward to, like, trial cycleways, so that when we go forward to the permanent version, we've got a whole lot of knowledge under our belt. I'd also like to acknowledge David Pennett, who came to speak this morning, who talked about combining the Waka. So bringing, this is about bringing Awhutini Strategy along with the Child and Youth Strategy together at the same time. This is one of the benefits of doing these together, and we're seeing it happen around the table today. And actually, there's probably, I think, quite a lot of really cool furniture sitting in a storage unit down at the landfill, which I'm really keen to get cleared off the space. So it's not like we probably have to get anything if we were to support this in any way as well. So I'll speak to the substantive at this time as well, if that's okay. Just broadly, look, just such thanks to the mahi of all the team that have put this together. Thank you to Kate, thank you to councillors Paul Day and O'Neill for reminding us why we're here a lot of the time. It is really important to have your voice and know that you're advocating for this. I also just want to thank all of our council workers that have done all of the work that we read about in the document. And I do want to share a moment that I did have an emotional rush when I read it, because my life as a mother in Wellington City passed before me. When I saw the mahi that this council and all the people within it have done for whanau and for our children, I was quite blown away. And I brought it up at our whanau kai last night. And so, yeah, I just want to acknowledge all of those that have worked so hard, the netball courts, the Zoo Bush Builders courses, our library, just it goes on and on and on, and right through to the youth stage that they're at now. But on the back of that, I asked them about inclusivity and feeling connected to our city, and both independently gave that 90%, but when it came to safety, they were down to 60%. And I found that quite alarming. So thank you councillor Paul for your mahi in this space as well. But really acknowledge the key issues that, yeah, housing is a critical part of this and that we are hearing that many can't afford to live here, so we really have to get that right if we want to retain our rangatahi here in our capital. So Keora, thank you councillor Conde, happy to second.
I'll speak quickly to the amendment, and thank you very much for bringing this forward. I think it's important that we do respond to the call that we've had today. I just want to say, I totally call your comments councillor Foo. I suspect that the Urban Dream Brokerage have probably already talked about young people being people that some of their spaces might appeal to. And so some of these conversations will probably already have been happening, and it's really just about how we can connect some of the funding that we have through things like the City Growth Fund. So it really isn't complex, it's about having some conversations. And the other one is also an opportunity to have a conversation about how young people can be drawn into those spaces. I remember the Box City that was done in readings years ago. My kids loved it, we spent hours in there, and it was such a cool space. And it is quite simple, it's not a really difficult thing to work through, and it's great that we have a group of people who have got the passion and understanding of how to do that, so let's harness that. And I thank you councillor Conde for coming up with that idea. I do think it would be important to include the likes of ZIL and BGI in the conversation, because as we've said, a space is a space. But, you know, when you are bringing people into a space, you do need to make sure there are people there who are willing and able to receive, you know, the complications that can come with that. And I don't think that's a complicated conversation either, because ZIL have been given extra funding to do some work with young people. And it might be easier for them to actually have a site that is more central to be able to access, so I think it could work quite well, may even end up morphing into what we come up with, so that'd be good. Next person to speak is councillor Fitzsimons.
Yeah, I just want to thank councillor Conde and councillor Foo for this, for their energy and enthusiasm around this amendment and the urgency with which this action will take place. Because I think that's what the whole City Recovery Fund was meant to be about, was responding quickly to a need. And we do have the ability to repurpose empty retail space. And I've been to both Queensgate and North City Plaza in the last month, and on both of those malls, where there is, and Johnsonville Mall, and where there is spare space, they have turned it into family hangout spaces, and they are really well-used. So capitalism understands the importance of providing these youth spaces. I suggest the Wellington City Council should too. And after all, parents are a spending demographic, and it will have an economic impact as well. And young people have been asking for it for so long, since the Central Library closed, and teachers have even got in touch with us and told us about how worried they are about young people leaving school and not having anywhere to go after school. And I'll just speak to the substantive at the same time. I just want to thank councillor Day for your energy and enthusiasm. I went to the youth summit, which was held, I think, at the TSB Arena with a very young baby, who ran all through it. But, man, those young people, they were inspiring and really could connect with the questions that were asked of them, which were questions about what they want to see Wellington be. And I found their answers very grounding and very useful in terms of how you, how I would act as a councillor, but also the types of change that we need to see in our city. And I did want to just comment on a couple of other things in the report. It does make sobering reading, and I think there absolutely will be costs. We should be gearing up for there to be significant costs in making our city the best it can be for young people, and there's a lot to do. We see the lack of access for some particularly poor children in sport being mentioned in the report, and we have a big problem with council sports fields and clubs that we fund and support being very, very difficult for young, poor children to access. And I know that the city mission and the Sports Bank have done amazing work with opening up sports to a much wider range of young people, but that's still a work in progress. I also just wanted to comment on the lowering of the voting age, which I think is very important. We have a legitimacy problem, less than 50% of Wellingtonians vote for us. It's an issue about our ability to effectively make decisions and to claim that we can act with legitimacy. I would really support running a mock election in schools at the next time of the next local body election, although I did talk to the mayor about this, and he was a bit worried about the number of candidate meetings he may need to attend. But I do think that we need to think creatively about all the ways that we engage young people, because we can't see local government turnout continue to decline, because we'll have even more of a legitimacy problem in the future. I did just want to talk briefly around the safety issues, because during the last long-term plan, I was involved with a campaign of a number of non-governmental organisations who came to us and asked us to commit to Wellington being a city which is free of sexual violence. And we did see a whole lot of practical components to their request. And I guess I want just to comment on councillor Pennett, your points. I love a feminist analysis as much as the next person, but what I would say, the challenge is... The challenge is turning a gender lens or a feminist analysis about safety into the city into practical solutions. And I know you think that lighting isn't an issue. Well, actually, when we looked at breaking down the requests of all the NGOs for a city that's free of sexual violence, urban design for crime prevention was one of the key ways that we can reduce crime. And I will never shy away from breaking down safety into achievable, practical chunks. And that's why we funded Take Ten, ZIL, that's why we've introduced the liquor ban, that's why we've been so supportive of Don't Guess the Yes. There's not one solution, but lighting, urban design, Don't Guess the Yes, Take Ten, all have a role to play, as well as, yes, an end to toxic masculinity. But that's not enough in itself, we need to change the practical, the urban form that we live in as well. And I guess just finally, I wanted to talk about the long-term future of the youth hub. I think that we need to make sure that we find a council site which can be used. I'm not sure that the kind of contracted-out model of providing space really works in the long term. Certainly wasn't what the architects of our city parks or playgrounds or libraries thought was a sustainable model. And so I would like to see the council take a much more active role in having a space for young people, like the City Library and the CBD, to make sure that it can last well into the future. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Free. Yeah, look, I'll talk to both now. I think this is an amazing piece of work, actually, and I really commend the staff and fellow colleagues who've worked on it. I think it's got some really, really useful information in it. I'm very supportive of lowering voting age. I think it's great for people to start voting when they're at school, and they have that peer pressure to actually get and vote, and that excitement around it. And once they've voted once, I think the research is there that shows that they think of themselves as a voter, as a person who votes, and they're more likely to vote, when maybe it's a little less easy to get to a place where you can do it. I've always had a thing about youth suicide, it's such a waste and a tragedy. I've always thought that it would be wonderful to be a city where we aspired, that young people had such hope that they would never even consider that as an option. I know that's really aspirational, but just as people talk about eradicating sexual violence, which is pretty aspirational, I think eradicating youth suicide is really aspirational. We should be wanting to have a city where people have hope and young people have cycleways and transport options, and they can get to places, and they can meet with their friends, and they have families that actually, you know, can do things for them because the families have enough money, and, you know, there's resources in the city. So to me, it's really saddening that we've got 141 Wellingtonians, young people who've self-harmed, and, you know, our most recent data from 2018, and that's up from 103. You know, it's not suicide sticks, but it's an indication that people are feeling pretty unhappy and desperate. So, look, I think this is such a good baseline of what's going on in our city, and we should update this regularly and actually expect trends to improve. I'm going to be supporting, at the same time, however, I have been thinking about all the challenges the city faces. And I know we are doing things like upgrading Frank Kitz Park. And I said recently, Te Papa's actually so amazing. They've recently upgraded, it's wonderful, it's an indoor space. I do sort of feel we've got, the city does provide quite a lot for young children, but doesn't provide much for teenagers. And so I am really happy to support seven. I think it's important that we do something as a result of what we've heard and the evidence we've got in this report. I know our staff is stretched, I know our resources are stretched, so regretfully, I won't be supporting eight. Thank you.
And that's all the, quarter on the amendment? Did you want to speak to the amendment or the substantive? Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just first of all, a shout-out to Brad Olson. Here I was at homegrown with my formerly... What? Yeah. With my old university mates, we used to be young. And here is Brad walking the walk with Take Ten, looking after folks in the city. And it's the first time I've seen him without a suit on, actually. But I went up, shook his hand, and said, "I've got to go", but hats off. Look, you know, I am very comfortable with the consultation document, and I think it does take us in a direction that we need to be moving in. Certainly, young people, I've got children, of course, are our future. But it does, a lot of the discussion we've had today starts taking us quite a long way away from our core business of water, waste and roads. We talk about partnership, we talk a lot about partnerships, and yet, the obvious partner here for those in the age group of, I'm guessing, about 12 to 16, are parents, and there's been no discussion. Do parents have any say in where their children go at night anymore? Do they have any responsibility to perhaps accompany them into these, you know, less safe places? I should also point out that the CBD has always been unsafe at times. This broken nose was as a consequence of an altercation that I didn't even, I can't even remember. Not because of... Not because of my alcohol consumption, but because I was mugged from behind. So, look, it... So, just talking about for younger children, and I guess this is the direction of the amendment number eight. I mean, just, you know, as Deputy Mayor Free mentioned, there's a lot of things that you can do with young kids. So first of all, there's the pools, there's Te Papa, there's the museum, there's waterfront climbing at Ferg's, there's another one by the stadium, Jumparama at Tofaya, Time Zone, don't go there without a lot of money. There's the old pictures, take them to the pictures, Tiny Town, Chipmunks. There's a huge number, none of which needs Wellington City Council's support, all of which is purely funded by the parents that have enough interest to take their, or funds, I suppose, to take their children along. So I am a little bit wary that we would be looking to, you know, take up expensive leases on Courtney Place to provide a place that's right next to Time Zone and just down the road from the theatre. So I won't be supporting eight. But overall, I'm broadly supportive, I think it's a great document, and there are aspects of it, the play spaces. I've got this fantasy of a kart race down the Crescent, which we used to do when we were kids in Hawke's Bay. So, you know, so anyway, so I'm broadly supportive of the rest.
I just want to quickly respond, councillor Rush, to your list of all those activities. We're pretty lucky to have all of those, but many people aren't lucky to be able to go to them, because most of them cost money, very few indoor spaces. Te Papa's really one of the only ones that's free, so that is a challenge. And, yeah, I mean, for my family, that's been something we've been able to do, but for many, it's just not an option, especially if you're coming in to the city for other reasons, and you've already spent money and you need to go somewhere with your kids to stretch their legs, because people on Lampden Quay don't necessarily like the kids running and whisking past them. In fact, I often said the zoo was one of the best places in the city where your kids could be kids and not be told off for running around. And we don't have many places like that, so I think it is a good option. councillor Matthews, did you want to speak to both?
To the amendment, sorry, but very, very briefly. I just want to make the point, because nobody else is... Um, I just want to make the point because nobody else has made it, that when people are talking about Wellington City and it feels bleak or whatever, it's often about empty shops. And that is a thing that, you know, everybody, like, they don't like and, you know, it's, there's not people around, there's not shops and, you know. So I think that this is a way that we can temporarily bring some lively activity to some empty spaces and that that is really important for just the experience of everybody in the city.
Councillor Young, I understand you're going to speak to both.
So just first of all, on the amendments, um, you know, I do have this unofficial rule that I don't support any last minute amendments with fiscal implication, you know, like spending money. So, um, irrespective of my views, in fact, I don't really support them anyway, but it's, it's a money thing. So it's, I want to be consistent. So, so that's the first thing about that. Um, so on the, the whole paper, I'm, I will be supporting it, but slightly reluctantly because I feel it is, a lot of it is nice to have. My real concern is, as you know, the cost of living in Wellington with the rates. And councillor Fitzsimmons, Simons, oh God, I've got such a fleur, fleur. Uh, said, you know, we're gearing up for significant costs and, you know, a little tremor of chill went through my, um, A1 negative blood. And, and I think, um, I think, um, I, councillor Panett said councillors have taken a hit recently. More about to do the same to the rate payers. And so, uh, you know, my concern is that we, nice, this is not a time for nice to haves. This is a time for us to focus on our water infrastructure and the cost of living in Wellington. In other words, trying to get the rates down. But I will support the paper in principle, but, but my heart is heavy.
You're doing it for the kids. Awesome. Um, Mayor Foster.
Yeah, I'm conscious of the time, um, so, uh, because we will not get through everything in the timeframe that some of us have got to. Some of us have got other meetings to go to. So, um, so with your, would you be okay if I spoke to both the, this and the arts paper at the same time? In a sense? Well, they are two diff, they are two different papers, but there is, but they're present, yeah.
Paper.
Yeah, they don't do that. No, okay. That's fine. Okay. Well, I'm probably not going to be able to stay for that. That's maybe the reason I asked them. But, um, I just wanted to, because the bit that is, um, the same of both is I did want to say thank you to the staff who've done a fantastic job. So, um, Kate Stamm, Jeff, um, to all of you, um, uh, thank you. Um, and Baz, your, your whole team, I think, have done a fantastic job. So I really appreciate that. And also look forward to the economic strategy when that comes through. Um, I'm, I'm broadly happy with the, the paper as it is. I, I'm not sure that it's, that the aspiration to vote at 16 is something I particularly think is particularly smart, but, um, and I suspect all it will do is, there'll be more people voting, but there will be a lower proportion, even, even lower proportion of the people who are eligible to vote is likely to vote. In terms of the amendments, oh, sorry, in terms of the, um, the comments, I particularly wanted to follow Nicola's comments there. There is an element to which we, you know, there's a little saying which says you can do anything, but you can't do everything. And there is an element to which it does seem that times we do try and do everything. Um, and I do want us to at least think as we do these things about trying to be smart with things and not just, the, the answer is not always throwing money at it. And we do have a, you know, we do have a very substantial rates rise this year already. Uh, and we are also, if you look at the coming years beyond that, they are not insignificant either. And there's a lot being said about affordability, but affordability for people to be able to live in their homes is kind of important as well and to be able to run businesses. And a lot of the source of this money, of course, comes from the business sector, which has done it pretty tough, uh, in the last year. That said, I think the, the idea, and this is, these are both investigations in terms of the amendments. And obviously the investigation includes what do you get from it? What are the terms and conditions that you might be able to occupy a space for? Um, how much is it going to cost? Because there are going to be people, and I think this is the, Laurie, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the kind of talent that Urban Dream Brokerage have brought to proposals like this over the years, has been able to say, hey, look, you've got a space which you're not able to occupy. It's better if you'd have somebody in there until you can get somebody permanent to occupy it. And that's the kind of concept which I think, I hope that we can get through this so that it's not something that is particularly expensive, but it's something where we are enlivening areas, um, and that we are, and, and the surrounding areas as well. So we're making the city feel a better place as well as providing something. So it doesn't have to be about throw money at something. And I guess that's my message is, given the pressures that we've got on us, we've got to be thinking smart and we've got to be thinking about partnerships. And one of the partnerships here obviously is with people who cannot find somebody to occupy those spaces. And I think we also need to think a bit smarter because, um, uh, Madam Chair, the, um, the, the other areas, if we, you know, we've got Zeal, we've got, you know, um, BGI, we've got, we've still got Evolve, I think, too, you know, um, and they are all, um, they're all doing a great job. But obviously if people are not aware enough of them, we've got to make people more aware of this, that they are aware of the facilities that are already there, rather than keeping on replicating.
Right of reply?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Um, very quickly, I'm just going to speak to the substantive before I go on to my right of reply, which is just to respond to Mayor Foster, your comment about that we can do anything but not everything and some of the other concerns people have raised about, you know, whether these, these initiatives are our priority. And that is, is something that I share. Um, I think, you know, we do have to be careful about how we prioritise. That said, I wanted to actually acknowledge the amazing work that's in the social framework because I think, um, one of the things that we say is, that I've heard people say, as a good strategy identifies what you won't do as well as what you will do. And one of the great things I like about the social framework is it, it talks about what are our key roles, what are our roles as council? And where are things inside our remit and where are things outside of our remit and where we need to partner or work with other people. So I think that those, those things and, and the really fantastic principles that are in the social framework will help with those prioritisation discussions. And that's really all I wanted to say except to thank you for the staff, for the, the excellent work, um, that's gone into this. So on the, the amendment, um, I just wanted to acknowledge that this, there's no guarantee that this is going to end up in a project or funding. This is a request to investigate, um, and to put a proposal to a, to a grants fund that has criteria. So, um, even if this may not result in a proposal, these conversations may happen and it just doesn't quite come together and that's okay. If there is a proposal, it still might not get funded because the, it still has to meet the criteria and it still has to go through those hoops to get funded. But I just, I just felt like there is a bucket of money there that we've set aside for exactly this kind of thing, where we want to revitalise the city in the wake of COVID. And, you know, having more people in the city is good for business. Having active shop fronts is good for the businesses around them. Um, and this is a, for me, I think there's a, there's a two birds, one stone opportunity here where we've got a problem we need to solve in the city, which is empty retail spaces and we've got a rural community need around, um, a youth space. I, I want to acknowledge that, that, uh, Gisella and her team, I'm sure are very stretched. We know everybody in the council is very busy and we really appreciate all the work that you're doing. And just to echo that in terms of the meaning of the motion, I'm not expecting this to be a, a whole new big project piece of work. I want to echo councillor Day's comments that this is, I hope, just a conversation and a bit of coordination. I think the intent behind this amendment is that we have some pretty amazing people in Urban Dream Brokerage who have some great, uh, relationships and connections. We've got some pretty amazing people at Youth Council, at BGI, um, and other places like Zeal and Take Ten. So just to acknowledge that when we took our break to chat, update the wording, it does now say, and other interested stakeholders on the youth space, because I think we really wanted to acknowledge Zeal, Take Ten and other groups that are doing great work in the space. We've got a lot of fantastic energy, um, a lot of really cool ideas. We've just got to get them to collide and come together. And that, that's really all I see the staff doing here is a bit of coordination, collaboration, connecting, having a conversation. If they do all of that and it, it just doesn't quite work out, that's fine. I'm not saying, you know, keep going even if you can't make it work. Give it a try if, and see if we can, we can actually get this, um, to, to turn out to a, a good outcome. I wanted to, um, just thank councillor Foon for her comments about how, what we can learn from the experiences of pilots and temporary spaces and see how those, that this could actually be a really important kind of almost active consultation. By doing these, by creating these spaces temporarily, it gives us a chance to have a conversation with those, those communities about what they might want to see in a permanent space. And just wanted to acknowledge there was sort of a question about, you know, can we, can we even deliver an indoor play space? That would be, you know, play equipment, that's a capital expense, this is an operating fund and all of that. And I guess again, just to speak to the meaning of the motion, that the intention here is that it's going to be, um, that we're going to do this quickly and cheaply and easily. Um, and I think that, you know, we need some tables and chairs, some bean bags, maybe some cardboard boxes, maybe some hand-me-down play equipment. Um, I, I take, you know, we can, I think stopping off at the tip shop to see what they've got there is, I, I certainly have some hand-me-down play equipment that I could probably donate my, my kid dress ups, that my kids are outgrowing. You know, I think that's, that's the spirit of what we're trying to bring here, um, is let's just bring this together and see what we can, what we can pull together on a shoestring in a really short period of time that could make a difference. Um, and on that note, thank you very much. I hope that you'll support these. Let's vote and we'll take a division on both.
They'll vote on seven first, which is the youth hub. So that's carried and then we'll do the second one, which is number eight. That is also carried. Fantastic. So we'll go back to the substantive now. And I don't have anyone else on the list to speak to the substantive. And if that's, oh, sorry, councillor O'Neill, I do, because councillor O'Neill has a wee amendment.
Um, Kia ora councillors, I wanted to speak to the substantive and also foreshadow an amendment today, which I will be supported by councillor Matthews. Um, the amendment is to identify specific support and programmes for Pacifica young people under, um, the strategy part and then under our approach. So it's not an action point, it's under strategy and our approach. I would like to start by opening my speech to acknowledge that the COVID economic recovery has been disproportionately incredibly uneven. Employment has remained solid for Pakia, um, but the unemployment rate has gone up for Maori and Pacifica in our city. We know that young people are also 41% more, sorry, young people are represented at 41% job losses of all people under the age of 25s and early, um, economic reports showing the amount of people that have been able to retain jobs. Through our information pack, um, there are really strong emphasis on, um, the disproportionate effects of social wellbeing in our city. Within the information pack, the CCDHB looked at rheumatic fever and impacts lined up as a directly preventable disease for people living in cold, damp and crowded homes. The impact is disproportionately shown on Maori and Pacifica peoples. Nearly one quarter of all Wellington homes are always or sometimes damp. And a study has shown that those affected are disproportionately young, 50% aged under 25 years of age. Once again, highest represented in Maori and Pacifica young people. 43% of Pacifica people living in housing, um, is defined as crowded compared to 5% of all Europeans. That's, um, that last statistic was from the Ministry of Pacific Peoples. And then lastly, youth mental health for Pacific young people were approximately twice as likely to have depression, anxiety issues or to make a suicide attempt as the rest of the population. We need to respond quickly to a crisis of young Pacific and Maori people within our city. The reason that I have added a specific amendment in there to consider under our approach is that, um, our, this, uh, draft strategy, um, policy framework and action plan has made a really clear intention to partner with Mana Fenewa. And I wanted to make sure that the other group of people that are most likely to be represented in these statistics, um, have a special focus as well. The reason that it falls under our approach is because, um, we think that this is something that we can work through with the Pacifica advisory group on council and be able to come out the other end hopefully with some solid action points, but we need to be doing this with that, those groups as well. Um, the Ministry for Pacific Peoples has congratulated Auckland City Council and their direct approach, um, being fundamental to Pacifica young people, feeling like they are able to grow and thrive and have a place to be. Um, and that is very much in lieu with what the strategy is trying to achieve for Wellington. Lastly, I'd like to talk a little bit to the substantive and respond to some other points there. I'm also happy to answer questions in my right of reply. Um, for councillor Calvert, the cost of not acting, um, means that these continued statistics in the information report for youth unemployment, um, means young people won't feel represented in Wellington. We need, uh, economic stimulus for young people in Wellington. We need action on housing, action on transport, and we need to be, um, investing in young people if we want to keep a, a, a city that thrives because, you know, if we don't have any young people, then about 30, 40 years, we won't have any potty under the age of being able to work. So, um, yeah, following on from that. To respond to councillor Panett's, um, point, a critical gender lens on city safety is really positive. But it does also require some action and, and some tangible, uh, assistance there. And as we've seen over the last week, leaders from all around the country have been commenting about how they feel in the city and that is incre- incredibly valuable as well. But to, um, to make the point adjacent to yours, um, we do know that a hashtag girl boss perspective can sometimes further harm other minorities. So that's why we need to be, um, really careful when we talk about city safety and making sure that, um, as, as you've stated and followed up from there, that, uh, it's not just women, um, or, or non-binary people, but that we are looking to care for everybody in the community. Um, and that is addressing through city safety measures and housing as well. I'm really supportive of a youth hub as a key space. Um, when I was a teenager, reading cinemas was open until 11:30 PM at night for movies. There were security guards, hangout spaces for families and friends and Maccas after school. Um, although, um, some of my other colleagues have talked about having a space, um, won't actually do that much for city safety or, or addressing those core issues. I believe it does. It gives people, um, a place to charge your phone, a place to rest, a place to meet your friends and a place where you don't have to pay $5.50 for a latte. Lastly, on the city safety thing, I wanted to acknowledge, um, Eva McGauley. She was a fantastic advocate and a friend of Simon and I's that brought me into the, um, scene of Don't Guess the Yes a long time ago that was launched under, with, with Fleur Fitzsimons. Um, and she was a really awesome, left a really awesome legacy and a challenge to council and she had really strong relationships within council to end, um, sexual violence within our city. And I think that's a really important, um, thing to pass back that this has been talked about over the last four, five years. Lastly, lowering the voting age. We can enlist in the army, we can work as an intern and slave away. Um, and we can hold jobs in our CBD. We can serve councillors' coffee, but we can't even vote yet. I know that, uh, to Mayor Foster's point, I know plenty of smart 16-year-olds and I do think that increasing the eligibility of others to vote, although statistically might mean that we start to see a bit of a jump in, in people that are enrolled but do not vote. I think there's opportunity in increasing any boundary, um, for others to be engaged in democratic processes is a positive for me.
Um, councillor, oh, who was second? Would you like to speak now or do you want to? Okay, councillor Calvert. Oh, sorry, there's, sorry, just quickly before that, councillor Paul has a question of councillor O'Neill.
I was just wondering if you would consider adding, um, migrant and refugee communities to your amendment? Just, I'm just looking at the page that it's updating and I just thought it would, like, given our big migrant and refugee communities, it could be called to include them as well in that particular, in that particular part?
I wonder if in the interest of time, we're happy to all accept this one, it's been amended?
Are people happy to accept this one?
Yeah, I'm, I'm really happy to accept that, especially because, um, migrant and refugee communities.
I would like to speak because councillor, um, O'Neill mentioned me.
Yeah, but she mentioned you, I guess, within the substantive. So whether you want to respond under the substantive or to the, to the amendment, if you support the amendment, let's get that one.
Yep, sorry, just answering councillor Paul's.
Yeah. If everybody supports the amendment, let's just vote on it quickly and, and get it through. Oh, sorry, would you just quickly like to speak councillor Matthew?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Um, uh, well, I could do both and speak to this substantive now as well, sorry. I, first of all, um, I think that's a great suggestion councillor Paul and, you know, that, um, to add that in. I just want to, um, acknowledge, um, councillor O'Neill's, you know, advocacy around Pacific Peoples and the importance of our advisory groups, um, to continue to feed in and maintain that connection. The, I just wanted to, I, I've got an invite to go and see the Maranga Action Group in a few weeks and, um, who are a group of, um, people with mainly, young people with mainly with intellectual disabilities. And, like, I think the whole kind of concept of the youth hub is something that they'll be very excited about. And for many, um, especially young disabled people, that kind of social isolation and, and free And for many, especially young disabled people, that kind of social isolation and friendship is very important. And so having this kind of space is really, really important, not just for those kids, but also for the other kids who get to hang out with people who are a bit different from them. So I, you know, will be talking with them and encouraging them to come and make a submission. That would be great to hear from them. I guess just to quickly kind of touch on that kind of concern from councillor Rush about the role of parents, because my, you know, my young person is just kind of in this zone as a fifteen-year-old who, she actually does want to get out and about independently. And she's kind of like, when she's at home, she's often in her room now, you know? I'm like, trying to entice her out of her room. But, so she wants to get out and about in town, but, you know, she is, lacks things to do sometimes and often she ends up sitting in McDonald's nursing a frozen Coke for two hours because it's like two dollars or something. So I guess it's not frozen at the end of the time, but, you know. So, you know, she is exactly the sort of kid who would use a more general youth space, but actually doesn't require the support of many of the youth organisations and kind of, I think, would feel slightly uncomfortable about going somewhere, which is a bit more sort of service oriented. Yes, and the other thing, I guess I want to kind of touch on that nice to have thing. Because I guess there is a difference between what's nice to have as an adult and what's essential to have as a young person or child. And, you know, what we might think are nice to haves are actually essential for those young people. So, and I don't know that we're always in the best position to judge what is a nice to have or an essential for another group of people who have a different experience than us. So I think, you know, listening to them, you know, for example, the hub is extremely important. And similarly, the lowering the voting age. And I kind of just want to acknowledge, as nobody else has the fantastic campaign from the Make It Sixteen people. And I just, I was thinking about Gina, who, when the, when the election date was shifted, she was, and it was like, it wasn't long, right? It was like a couple of weeks and she, a month, and she was, she was able to vote, you know? So it was like, this is the kind of thing about these anomalies where we have, you know, and particularly if we were going to go to a four-year term, that, you know, those young people would be excluded for quite a long time. So I think that it would be fantastic to have more young people supported to vote and especially in local government elections and supported through the school to do that. Because when you get to, you know, eighteen or twenty and you're flatting, things like a postal vote, these kids have not heard of stamps. You know, this is an outmoded technology for young people. And, you know, so we really need to get in there and support them to vote in a way that respects what their life experience is, which is very different from ours. Thank you.
Kia ora. So now that that's been moved and seconded, we will do a wee right of reply. It shouldn't be too much.
Can I just be clear where in the paper this sits?
It's page forty-eight seventeen of the strategy. So it's sitting in the area where it's got the description and then it says our approach. And it will be a statement under there, which is why the suggestion from councillor Paul about adding the refugee and migrant communities, because they are actually included in the actions. But the difference for the Pacifica one is that we need to find some actions, which we'll talk with the Pacifica community about. So your right of reply.
Yep, just briefly to cover off as well is to give a massive thank you to Kate, Geoff, Baz and the engagement team. You've sat at many Pacifica advisory group meetings, listening for feedback and working through with how people want to be represented. And I know that this has come through as well. And lastly, just to cover off a point that I forgot when initially talking with, which is that Wellington City Council doesn't have a Pacific peoples' strategy. And as a national leader, as a country that holds the highest amount of Pacific people in population in the world, we should be leading in this area and we should be making sure that everyone feels like they have a place to stand, which is why section four of this strategy is my favourite part of the strategy. But yeah, so thank you all and I look forward to more debate.
So let's vote. Yeah. Take a division too. And it's carried unanimously. All right, so we're going to go back to the substantive. I think councillor Calvert, did you want to speak to the substantive?
Yeah, look, I just, I just wanted to, I would have called a point of order, but I thought I could have done it in just in responding to that amendment. But just, I got the impression councillor Ne that you thought I wasn't going to support the consultation document by your comments. So that's why I wanted just to be quite clear that, as I've indicated, I will be supporting it's going out to consultation. I just didn't agree with spending ad hoc some extra money right here and now.
All right, okay, I'll do a quick right of reply. I just wanted to acknowledge and thank councillor Paul for her highlighting the voting age change and that's being included in this document. And for me, that is one of the parts where I say I see young people's voice coming through because actually this is not necessarily about our opinion here, it's about making sure we also provide a platform for people to have this conversation. And the evidence is strong, as has been shared by many people around this table. I think when I went to the Make It Sixteen campaign launch, the thing that really struck me was when they said, if you are ninety-six and you maybe are going to live for a couple more years, you can vote and you won't have to deal with the consequences of your voting. But someone who's got their whole life ahead of them doesn't get to have an impact. And I was like, that's a really interesting concept. I'd just like to respond to councillor Calvert. Thank you for your support for the paper and your comments around the summit. In response to your comment about the costs, actually, that's one of the things I said on Tuesday, it's really good, the background and for the supporting information for this paper is really good and actually addresses the financial implications really clearly. At the moment, some of these things, if, when you read and look at the action plan, some of it will actually fall into existing budgets. Actually, quite a lot of it does. It's really about the way we think about it. So those impacts aren't huge, but then we get to revisit these things in the annual plan. So for the long-term plan, many of these things won't be ready to be done at this point, but, you know, for the annual plan, we can revisit that. And I think it is really important that we do consider how we do invest in our young people because they are our future. And actually, there is a cost to not doing it, as was said before. Councillor Pannett, you talked about the city as a play space and I think that's a really important concept and our play spaces policy addresses that really well. It talks a lot about how play happens in all sorts of different places and that play is broad. And I think councillor Conde, that we will see through the work that happens from yours, that the opportunities in these retail spaces or the MD for play can be quite diverse. We might be having a picture in mind of slides or whatever in a place and what they come out with might be quite exciting and interesting and new. So it's important to be open-minded to that. And I just wanted to respond to your comment about talent in the, in the social framework. I actually think it is inclusive because it's not saying that talent is one thing or another. Actually, you're right, everybody has a talent of their own. And what we're saying is if you have a talent in something that you want to participate in the city, the city should offer the opportunity for you to be able to do that. If you're a really good plumber, you should have the opportunity to work in Wellington. If you are really good at drawing, you should, because we need them, yes. But there are many ways that people have talents and I think the key thing is that the city identifies that talent should be, should be caught and supported. Deputy Mayor Free, I really support your concept around the mental health issues and suicide. And I actually remember when I first got into council, you spoke at a council meeting and you talked about your desires to see us really make a difference here and for young people, we're hearing there is a real opportunity for us to respond. So thank you for raising that. When I, often when I go and talk to young people around the city to do with this strategy and other things, what I say to them is, your voice is really important. We hear a lot from your parents and often they'll tell us what they think, how the city would be good for you. Often it's different to what you say, because actually, they're not on the train with you when you're going in on your own. They don't know the little hiccups that you've had because by the time you get home, you've forgotten about it. And it's not until someone asks you a specific question that you respond. So I've always been really strong on the fact that parents do have an important role to play in the city and I agree with that councillor Rush. But the strategy is about making sure that the voice of young people is heard so that as, especially in those transitionary times, we are really aware of what the challenges are for those people. And Kate has reassured us that she will be talking with people with younger children as well to get those perspectives. I don't see this stuff as nice to have. I see this as an opportunity to, to help make our city as vibrant as it can be for everybody. I think it's also important to acknowledge that when you read through the action plan, actually, you see how many strategies and policies actually interact with this and that the things that we are doing will already be in train. It's just that we need that mindset, as councillor Pannett often says, just remembering to think about the young people when those strategies are being created. And yeah, let's vote.
Two, seven and eight. Seven and eight, is it? Yeah, separately, thank you.
Sure, so we'll vote on everything else except seven and eight and then we'll do that last. We're doing them next, so we can decide whether we want to do them together or separately. But we're doing everything else now, we're voting on except for seven and eight. And while we're waiting for it to-
No, it wasn't.
It wasn't, neither of them were.
Yeah. Nice try.
Very moved on. Yes, thank you. That's carried unanimously. And then we'll do seven and eight, we'll do each one separately. So if we do seven first. Yeah, we'll take a division on them. Thank you. That was carried, sorry. Should have said that. And then we'll do eight. Division on this too. That is also carried. Thank you very much, everybody. We're going to move quickly on to the quarter two report and I'd like to invite the deputy mayor to introduce that. What's it, sorry? I think the quarter two is going to- Okay, okay, so we're going to do Ahatini, the Arts and Culture Strategy. Well, no, we'll do the strategy now. I think the mayor is needing to go. So councillor Young, if you'd like to introduce that.
Okay, well, I have great pleasure in introducing this, especially as my seconder is still here, because the mayor, his worship will be seconding these recommendations. So first of all, I have a few thank yous, quite a few thank yous to do. First of all, to Geoff for his enduring patience, but especially to Sam, it's a nightmare doing anything with me when it comes to editing because it's the one time when I really go into the detail and she has been charming and patient and keeps smiling, she must be on something. But I'd also like to thank our fantastic arts team, Natasha, Katie, Eve, Felicity, Laura, Peora and the whole Toi Ponaki team and of course, Gisella. And the events team, David, Sherrell, Suzanne, Delia, Toby, Brenda and Andrew. This is a very busy part of council. And the city recovery team, which have really stepped in this year with what of Wellington was a theatre, Dejan, Dan and Kiri and Warwick. So that's the thank yous. So first of all, I'd just like to say to you that when I was a schoolgirl, Mother Monica, who was the border mistress, kept on telling me I was bold, thinking it was a criticism. And I thought it was a great thing to be. So I'm really proud that this policy sets out to be bold, as it states, now is the time to be bold. Well, you've got the right councillor. So it's said that creatives have elements of chaos. So that's why they need the city council to provide sustained support for our local creative talent. We need to help encourage contemporary emerging and indigenous art in all its forms. It's about reinforcing our city's DNA. So under the Local Government Act of two thousand and two, council has responsibilities to support the social, economic, environmental and cultural wellbeing of Wellington and Wellingtonians. And we've been identified recently as one of the twenty-one places of the future by the City for the Future of Work, which sets the stage for jobs for the future. So Ahatini twenty thirty combines the review of the two thousand and eleven Arts and Culture Strategy with the original Ahatini principles of two thousand and eighteen to give new and clearer direction for Wellington's cultural and wellbeing for the next ten years. I promise you, in ten years, I won't be at this table. But it'll also help- Yeah, yeah, no, look, you know, I'm a woman of my word.
She'll be at Greater Wellington.
A retirement home for a taxideratist. I'm really specialist in the environment and things like that, you know? So anyway, back to business. This will help council deliver the Wellington we all want, innovative, inclusive and creative. It's about strengthening our identity and driving our creativity further by attracting, fostering and retaining talent in the city. We want to grow our creative industries to become more powerful economic, social and environmental contributors. We want Wellington to be a place where people want to train and then choose to stay. So Wellingtonians love the arts. Over the course of a year, eighty-seven percent of residents were engaged in the arts in some way. I'm not sure that included all city councillors, by the way. And just over half participate in the arts. I'm not, I'm not looking at Shaun. Council has a huge role as provider, funder, partner, facilitator, advocate and regulator. We've strengthened, we're strengthening two of our major arts venues, the Town Hall with its glorious acoustics and the St James Theatre. Both are major engineering feats and expensive. We're yet to tackle the Opera House and the Takina Convention Centre opens in two thousand and twenty-three with an exhibition centre that will host international and I hope national exhibitions. So I'm assuming that you have all read the report, so I'm not going to grind through it in great detail because I don't want to send you to sleep. But you know that our four focus areas of the strategy are people, partnership with Maori, our city as a stage and pathways. And then there is this proposal to form an arts and creative sector group to champion the vision, I hate that word, explore trends, opportunities and partnerships. Always sounds like you're on drugs or you're very religious and neither. So I returned from London twenty-five years ago, thinking Wellington was a cultural desert and I thought, it's never going to be the same as going to London. But of course, in Wellington, you can go to a concert and as I live in the inner city, walk home afterwards. When I lived in London, it was, can we get the last train? So when I came back twenty-five years ago, Wellington had been transformed from the grey city of my youth and people no longer wore min, no longer wore walk shorts and long socks and sandals to work. As a Wellingtonian, as a- As a Wellingtonian, as a Wellingtonian, as a city councillor and the leader of the arts, culture and events portfolio, I'm really proud of our arts sector, especially when there's so much happening. So let me just give you a few snapshots of recent weeks. What if Wellington was a theatre? I didn't actually come to grips with how many events there were, but twenty-seven organisations were involved, seven hundred and two individuals received at least the living wage, which you'll all be thrilled about. And it's good, I mean, it's good, but it's just I don't think council should pay it to its direct employees. And the council investment, council invested six hundred thousand dollars. Now, it was an amazing program. The city really did come to life and were events on construction sites and it was extraordinary. Then we've just had the fringe, a hundred and sixty-six events, over twelve thousand six hundred pre-sales, almost thirty percent up from previous years. A hundred and seventy thousand dollars went direct to the artists. Thirty-seven percent of events sold out, forty-three venues, over one thousand artists and seventy-six, seventy-six percent of the artists came from the Wellington region. So I was really lucky, I went to the last event of Fringe on Saturday night, the Cabaret. It was absolutely fantastic. I was bemused that the last item was something that forty years ago, you would have had to go to a bar in Vivienne Street to see, which was a strip show, it was amazing, fantastic, wonderful body, but it was just like, oh my God, this, the world has changed. And anyway, I'm not planning to, I'm not planning to emulate that. But we, yeah. So Wellington, so Wellington has a strong national career, has many of our strong national creative organisations and training institutions. The New Zealand Symphony Orchestra, a truly world-class outstanding orchestra. Orchestra Wellington, which I absolutely adore, it had its program recently of major film overtures from films that I've never been to see. film overtures from films that I've never been to see, but fortunately, like Action Man and Mr Marvel, or something, Captain Marvel. But it showed clips of the films at the same time, it was absolutely fantastic, and the place was packed, it had two performances, and they were people you would never see at a classical music concert, it was fantastic. The Royal New Zealand Ballet, footnote, the Museums Trust, you know, with the wonderful Wellington Museum, which councillor Conde is a treasure house within a treasure house, lest we forget. And Chamber Music New Zealand, Toi Ponaki, University School of Music, which has produced outstanding opera singers and museums over the years. And then don't forget the fine arts and our excellent dealer galleries, most clustered around Cuba and Guzni Street, and I'm hoping to do a council tour of some of them, but we just haven't had time. And the newcomer to the arts scene, Wellington Opera, who would have thought we could have a new opera company in Wellington? Don Giovanni, by Mozart, for those of you who are not familiar with opera, opens next month. It's a huge opportunity for local talent, it is nearly all Wellington talent, and the opening night has almost sold out, I had a sneak preview of the seating plan the other night. For those of you who want to go, think of the Gods, which is the top gallery, for those of you who are not familiar. Now, I know some councils are concerned that the action plan is a little too embryonic, but that will change after consultation, because it's really important that the council doesn't lay down a framework for creativity, but we're just there to nurture, not instruct. So we need to get the feedback and, and then, then work out the action plan. So it's really important we hear Wellingtonians' views, and will this strategy take us to where we want to be? Where do we want to be right now? I'm happy to be here. So I encourage all Wellingtonians to make the most of these outstanding events, go to the theatre, buy a painting, attend concerts, read a book by a New Zealand writer, celebrate artists. And lastly, because this is a bit of a sermon, coming up this weekend, Cuba Dupa. So I've got the programme here, it is outstanding, it is an amazing programme. In the city Wellington, do please come by bike or walking, because there won't be any parks at all, but this is, yeah, well, whatever, they're not all coming from Brooklyn, but I mean, look at the, look at the number of events over two days, fantastic. And so that's it from me, I'd be very grateful for your support for the strategy.
Mayor Foster.
Oh, look, very hard to follow that, thank you Nicola, it's fantastic introduction, and I wanted to echo your thanks to the, to the officers who've done a fantastic work in this, but also to you for the work that you do and the enthusiasm you have for, for arts and culture in our community. I am delighted we've got to this point. What we did is we set out a few, a few months ago, I can't remember exactly how many months ago it was, to, and we said there were three strategic priorities that we wanted in terms of essentially the discretionary policy work that we wanted done. We've just dealt with the, the young persons policy, now we have the arts and culture strategy, and then we've got the economic strategy coming. There's been a lot of work and pre-consultation, and I think that showed its value, because we would have had a different, probably a very different proposition if we hadn't had that pre-consultation. So again, thanks officers for the work you've done, and to the arts and culture community for their engagement in that. Ahutini means the weaving together of many strands, and what I really like in this is not only is there a weaving of strands within what we do as a, as a council, but there are, and that's, you know, everything from economic strategies and young people's strategies, heritage strategies, you know, the place of the capital city, iwi. But I'm also seeing that this is, this is also integrated around our community, and I just wanted to, to reflect on going to the, the Fringe Festival Awards, which I saw you coming in as you were going, that was really brilliant. There was, that was on Sunday, and there was just this, a whole room full of people there, celebrating not their own success, but each other's success. And to me, it was a real reflection of a community which comes together and supports each other. And people, you know, one day you'll work with one group, another day you'll work with another group, another day another group, and these groups will work together across that community. But I thought the passion that was there for each other's success, I thought was really brilliant. And actually, that's something I've seen across all parts of our community, whether it's the IT sector, you know, the digital, digital sector, whether it's the, the arts sector, and I think that's a really strong part of what our, what makes us a strong community and is going to, going to stand this city in really, really good, really, really good stead. But we pride ourselves as being the arts and culture capital. I think there's some work that's been done, which Nicola have highlighted, which, which shows that that is actually the case, that there are more people engaged in arts and culture in Wellington than there are in any other part of the country. You know, some of the others get close, but we are still the top, which is a really great thing, but we can't take it for granted. And it means we do need to do some work to polish that crown. And we are doing that work, I mean, Nicola's highlighted some of those things, the investment that we're making in venues is massive, the investment which we're making in events through that recovery fund, so please don't take it all for doing other things, but that is massive for our arts and culture sector, that's really, really important. Because without that, all these events, you know, things like the city as a theatre, they wouldn't happen, things like Cuba Dupa, they wouldn't happen. So we are really doing that. And we also provide a lot of the underpinning for some of these, or part of the underpinning for some of these institutions, you know, whether it's the ballet, whether it's the opera, whether it's the orchestra, but I did want to highlight the opera, because that was a very recent establishment in the last 12 months, sorry. Yeah, the Wellington Opera, yes, the Wellington Opera, a very recent establishment in the last 12 months, and would not have happened if we had not provided the cornerstone funding for it. But they've also gone out and worked really, really hard to get other funding from other places too, so they're, they're leveraging off our support. And so I'm really delighted, and I'm really looking forward to seeing Don Giovanni in their first, their first performance, although they were involved very much in City as a Theatre as well, which is really great. What I also like in the strategy is it's also saying that we're not just going to put arts and culture behind closed doors in venues, arts and culture is going to be out on our streets. We've seen that with City as a Theatre, and the opportunities are immense. One of the things I did want to reflect on is I went to the 30th birthday of footnote dance, where they had, they had a Cuban band there as well, and they performed outside in the, in the sort of car park behind their, their current building. And then we all walked up Cuba Street to the venue, which they were going to have this sort of after-party, and you could just see the, and it was one of those things, you bottled sheer joy, that people, people who were passing by both ways, the people who were walking up with the, with footnote and with the band, people just loving it. That is what we want in our city, it really brings joy and life to our city streets, and I think that that's some of, one of the things that I think that this, this strategy will allow us to drive. The, the last couple of things I wanted to, to mention, I really like the idea of having an arts and creative sector group. I know you didn't particularly like the idea of visions there, Nicola, but I think it's really important that we continue to engage with the sector. That's not something we actually do, we just do put it on a shelf, but that we've actually got the sector continuing to be involved in the, in the, the development and the, and the delivery of this strategy over a period of time. And the other bit that I'm really looking forward to is that through the, through the consultation process, that we do actually get that action plan, and, and that we can, and that it brings some real practical delivery actions as a result of the, of the strategy. So delighted to be here, again, thanks to everybody who's been involved with it, happy to second, and then you'll have to pick a second, second, because I've got to go in just a moment.
Does anyone want to speak on this paper? If you want to speak, don't be put off, because actually we are here to, to give it the, okay, so councillor, deputy mayor free, that will mean you're taking over seconding, is that right? Sure. Would you like to speak now, or would you like to allow others to? Okay, so councillor Fitzsimons.
Yeah, just very briefly, I want to wholeheartedly support this strategy, it's, Wellington is meant to be their creative capital, but what this report contains is a whole lot of warning signals, particularly around the employment of artists, it talks about the precarious nature of their work, and also that figures from Creative New Zealand show that average annual income from creative work is $15,000. So we have a lot of work to do, making sure that we properly support artists, and I think that will mean more funding from this council to the arts, we can't just rely on it, we'll rest on our laurels. I also want to talk about another challenge I hear from the creative community, whenever I've spoken to them about the challenges they're facing, which is a lack of housing. And I would like to see us consider using the Takai apartment conversions model for specifically targeted housing for artists, because we know that they're absolutely critical to how our city runs and functions, and a core part of our social and cultural infrastructure, but we don't provide them with basic things like housing. So I want to applaud councillor Matthews and the fund that she set up for the living wage at events, because that will go, that will flow into the pockets of artists, but we need to do so much more to make the jobs of artists in Wellington more secure and less precarious, better paid, and make sure that we're providing other basic infrastructure for them, including potentially targeted housing.
Thank you, I'll just speak really quickly, this is an excellent strategy, it, I'm, yeah, particularly impressed with the, the things highlighted under focus area to partnership with Maori, we've got a lot of depth of information and opportunities there, which is really exciting. And I just, I do want to support what councillor Fitzsimons says, that one of the things that we hear the most about our arts community is the struggle just to be able to live in Wellington and do the thing that you love and want to contribute to the city. And one of the specific things that I've had mentioned to me by independent artists is the, the need for rehearsal space, which is free. So it's important that we, we do what we can to help coordinate that as a council, and we do have the ability to be able to do that, even if we don't always come up with the solutions, we can make sure that the opportunities are connected. So I think it's really important that we are open to hearing that, because I'm sure we will hear that from the independent artists. It's not the only challenge they have, but I know that it's a significant one. Councillor Foon.
Kia ora and ngamahi for all the mahi that's gone on for this Ahutini, and it's great to see it ready to be launched into the community. And also just want to thank councillor Young for your ongoing patronage and your support for our community. I know that you barely get a night at home, and so I'm really impressed with your stamina, quite something. But, so, yeah, I just completely support this and really happy to have the action points coming to us rather than us telling them, so thank you for recognising that. But I guess what I do want to say is that this city has hung its hat since the 90s on being the creative capital, and then we proceeded to plough a motorway right through the creative heart of it. And since then, I've been aware of, you know, straddling a disgruntled community that, that hasn't felt supported or enabled by what we've brought. And it may not be all of the community, but what I'm really hoping is that by talking with them, this, this strategy will flush out what that is and what we can do, because that's not what, what we want to hear from our creative community. And while, you know, for Wellington, I really love what David Panett brought this morning, that actually we want to work with Auckland, there's space for all, and we need to stop that competitive conversation, but that we bring something different. And I think that the what we're different to Wellington could look not only as arts and culture in our theatres, and not only is it in our streets, but also that it's in the way we design our city spaces and the way we solve our problems. And that is when I personally will be happy with what, how our creative community is involved in our city. Kia ora.
Just to quickly note that we've just corrected, it should say the portfolio leader for the arts, so we've corrected that, not associate, otherwise councillor Young might not feel that she can do what she needs to do. What have you been doing, councillor Conde?
Councillor Young, you accidentally got demoted there for a moment, but it's good that we've got that sorted out. Yes, I'd like to speak just a little bit about David Panett, when he came to speak to us from Creative New Zealand, was talking about how important it is that we have thorough and broad consultation, and we hear from a wide variety of voices. And just want to thank the staff for, there's a lot of detail in the paper about exactly what the consultation's going to look like, and how it's going to be more focused around hui conversations, and, and again, as he was talking about, kind of, he was talking about our work in terms of empowering artists to surprise us with their art, rather than curating for the top, but I think here we're actually empowering artists to surprise us with their ideas about the ecosystem and the framework and the support that they need, rather than curating from the top, which is great, but it means it, it's, you know, a fantastic way to go, but we need to make sure we, we do make the effort to hear those wide variety of voices, and we have heard from independent artists in the city that they aren't feeling that heard. I thought about bringing an amendment, but I think I will just take it on faith from the assurances I've had from staff, that they will be, you know, reaching out particularly to independent artists, and making sure that as part of that consultation, that independent artists can be heard, because I think because they don't have an institution they're part of, often they feel like they don't quite get, they're not easily connected to some of these conversations, and we really need to make sure that they feel like they are connected, and they are getting a chance to have their say. You know, again, just to talk of what councillor Foon was saying about, I think I would love to see this strategy, when it comes back to us, having a really clear story about how Wellington's creative hub is different to Auckland, and being able to tell that, that if we're not in competition, then we have to be able to tell a story about how we're different and how we're, how we could collaborate. And I think, you know, some of those, the things about Wellington that are different, Auckland is, is always going to have more people, a bigger scene, more commercial arts, but Wellington, we're, we're quirky, we're edgy, we might be, the word surprising that David Panett brought us this morning, which I thought was great, we talk about emerging, being able to say emerging arts, giving space to experiment for early career artists. I think all of those things is starting to, to get towards the story of what is Wellington, and how is that different from Auckland? And I think just acknowledging other councillors' points, I think where, where people are leaving Wellington to go to Auckland or elsewhere for bigger things, or for different opportunities, then that's a sign of success. It's a sign of that we've done a good job as Wellington of nurturing their emerging careers, and now they're so successful that, that they've got even more doors opening to them. But if they're leaving Wellington because they can't stay, they want to be here but they can't stay, then we've got a problem. And so that's really, you know, I would like us to, to really be focusing on that part of the conversation as well. You know, if, if a Taikawa Titi comes through Wellington and becomes so successful that, that he needs to go elsewhere, that's a great success story, that's not a failure of Wellington that we couldn't keep him here. But where we've got an artist who wants to work in Wellington but can't afford the wrench, or can't find enough gigs to put together a stable, sustainable career, then that's where we're, we're failing as a city. And I think making that distinction is really, a really valuable thing as well. And just wanted to, again, Mayor Foster was talking about this idea of having the creativity spilling out into our streets, and as one of the transport portfolio holders, you know, I think that's a great idea, thinking about what is our streets as, in public spaces, our built infrastructure, and how do we, how do we build in creativity into things like how we design our streets, how we build our built infrastructure, so that our city is a stage, and that, that the creativity isn't something that just happens inside venues, it's something that happens across our city. So there's just some great, exciting things in the, in the strategy, and thank you so much for your work on it.
Councillor Matthews.
Kia ora, very quickly, first of all, I'd like to thank councillor Young for her leadership not associate role, and also how I much enjoyed that speech that was, you know, jam-packed with a little inappropriate moments. Yes, edgy, surprising. I, and I'd like to thank all the officers for their work, and in particular, I'd like to acknowledge Sam and the way she has put accessibility for disabled people at the heart of this, and it was wonderful to see the early engagement. And there's a, there's a lot in there, both about the access for disabled people to be, go to our venues and be able to see and experience arts in Wellington, but also about their, their jobs and passions as, as creatives themselves. And, you know, you just have to go to any sort of disability rights events, and the, the dancers are there, and the comedians, and the, and the singers, this is a huge, you know, and many disabled Wellingtonians get so much joy out of their participation in the arts, and, you know, give a lot of joy as well by, through their creative abilities. I, I just wanted to briefly touch on our role as a literary giant city, you know, as that's kind of the form of culture that I'm mostly consuming, and that they, you know, I would say, you know, you just have to look at the, the Ockham Awards every year to see the dominance of Wellington writers, and what is a thriving literary scene. And when I think about the, the books that I've read by Wellington writers in the last couple of years, you know, Rose Liu, Kate Deignan, Carl Schuka, great Dame Fiona Kidman, Pip Adam, all of these writers who are living, working, but also writing about our city, and poets as well, I mean, it's just, it is, there's a lot to be proud of there. And I guess I just quickly wanted to touch on the, the points that councillor Fitzsimons made about the importance of a living wage for artists. Artists have been a real central part of our living wage movement for as long as it's been going, we always have performances as part of our events, and, you know, things like the Living Wage Stage at the Newtown Festival, but, you know, creative people, you know, know how important this is, especially because your work... your work might not be regular, that it's paid at a reasonable rate. And, you know, and the issue of housing, and I think that distinction that you made, councillor Conde, was, is really important, because, you know, I've been hearing quite a lot about the thriving creative scene in Wanganui, like I really have been, and that a lot of Wanganui's gains are our losses, it's people who can't afford to live in Wellington. And, you know, when you kind of look at what you can buy for your money, I think I shared a, like it was a 10-bedroom house for like $570,000 or something, you know, like, it's like, let's all go and live in Wanganui and have a beautiful artist commune. But, you know, so we really do need to get on top of those issues if we are to continue to be a home for artists. So thank you, and it's an absolutely great strategy, I'm happy to support.
Thank you councillor O'Neill.
Thank you councillors, I know we're all feening for lunch, so I'm going to keep it brief. I'm really proud of the strategy, I think it's really awesome, and I think there's a huge potential to foster young, diverse creatives and audiences for Wellington. And looking at the strategy, I also keep front of mind the report, the venues report that's come out, that talks about Wellington's creative spaces and how they utilise and how we need to be leading better in that space. Also, in that report, a little timely, that we've, that we passed a youth strategy this morning, because the report also illustrated that most audiences were catering to 55-plus people. And with this art strategy, I'm really excited as well that it's put accessibility as a really key priority, and that touches on financial accessibility as well. I'm really stoked to see an emphasis on equity and an emphasis on putting artists at the middle of this. As we know, and as other councillors have touched on, secure, sustainable arts and employment has been a really large challenge, not just for Wellington, but around the globe as well. And I note, having had the privilege to have many colourful flatmates over the years and really close friends in the sector, I've sat many a times in a dusty part of Anvil House, holding props and squished into a tiny meeting room, and you've only got two hours to rehearse a three-hour show, and then you've got to get out again because someone else is coming in, and that pressure's really, really real for young people. And since, every time I look back and I think about an artist that's still in Wellington, they're not, they're in Auckland now, but it's, but it's around the cost of living and some other really key pressures as well. And lastly, I just wanted to thank the artists that have come in, approached Wellington City Council, Joe Anderson, Independent Artist Collective, we've had approaches from creatives in Fringe Festival in Cuba Dupa, and all the fantastic hustle that goes behind putting on an awesome festival like these and enabling really accessible standards of art in our city. And then lastly, just to thank you councillor Young for bringing the leadership on the sector, because it's something that, that people like to talk about a lot, and I'm really proud of the work that you do. And for other council colleagues, it's, you know, we talk about one event, councillor Foon's out supporting other creative work, and I just constantly, and councillor Paul, actually, those are my two art champions that I see outside of councillor Young at big festivals and things like that, so that's really awesome. Cheers.
Councillor Rush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I do play the Philistine black t-shirt wearer from Napier from time to time. It is all true, I should reassure you. My wife, however, is not, and certainly enjoys some of the finer things that councillor Young would also share. But nevertheless, when we chose to come back from the UK, there was only one city to come to. And for my part, going back to the late 80s and moving my sister into Cuba Street in this wonderful, vibrant, Bohemian-type atmosphere with Slow Boat Records giving away great music and so forth. And so I guess for people who may not particularly participate in the sorts of things that this strategy is designed to support, it still resonates as part of the city and makes it vibrant, makes it interesting, and makes it wonderful to be, so I'll be supporting this.
Thank you councillor Young, would you like a write-up reply? Or do you want to speak?
Very quickly, look, it's all been said before, but I have discovered I do like ballet as part of being on council, and one of the things that was so special was actually the Hans Ongretel Ballet, which was world first in Wellington. Really special. But for me, the exciting thing is actually when everybody can partake in art. So for me, the stuff that's been done in a city as a theatre was so amazing, and seeing the little bits of sculpture and the plaques and things around the city are what really resonate with me. So what you said councillor Rush about bringing it into the city and making the place so vibrant and interesting is a big part of what I think the strategy is going to achieve and will do. Everyone else said everything much more eloquently than I can, and it's also getting very late, so that's a bit from me.
Great, so write of reply, councillor Young.
So this is hopefully the shortest write of reply. Thank you all for your support, I really appreciate it, the arts sector really appreciate it, our very large and competent arts team will also appreciate your kind remarks. Just one thing I'd like to point out to councillor Matthews, Wanganui, you're absolutely right, it's a growing art place, but it has been for decades. It's always, I mean, a lot of the people who worked on Lord of the Rings learnt their costume-making skills in Wanganui, it's got that great glass blowing training school up there, I mean, it's been fantastic for decades. So it's nothing new, but I mean, if you want a 10-roomed bedroomed house, that's the place to go to, but you'd miss the arts programme, I can tell you. So anyway, thank you all very much, I look forward to support and I look forward to seeing you at Cuba Dupa over the weekend.
Let's vote. Spooking, again. Okay, that's carried unanimously, thank you. We're going to go on to item 3.1, which is the Grants Subcommittee. We can have a break, I'm fine with having a break. We can do this one really fast, I reckon this will be like a two-minute.
Oh, could we do the quarter report?
No, let's do this one. The Grants Subcommittee, you're on, are you, are you, you're on it? Okay, over to councillor Fitzsimons, we're going to do this one.
I just really briefly want to introduce this report, it's been comprehensively considered by the Grants Subcommittee, we are looking to roll over some funding because of a combination of factors, including a new system put in place, and, yeah, happy to answer questions, you can see there what they're for.
I'm happy to second that paper, is there any debate on that paper? That's not your hand up, eh? Great, so then there's no write of reply, and we will vote. We want your vote. Okay, so that's carried unanimously. Now, we have one more paper to go, and then we have a quick announcement from staff on something. We want to have like a five-minute break now, there is no lunch, because we were meant to be quick, and we aren't. So we'll just have five minutes now, we'll come back at five to one. Faripaku, get a...
We're free to introduce item... Two, I think it was. Two point two. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so look, thank you obviously to officers who've worked hard on this. And there's so many people to thank, but in particular Bronwyn, thank you, and Lloyd, and Deirdre, and your team, and Martin, and your team. So there's been a lot of people putting this together. This report has come to us relatively late because it actually is the report that relates to last year, from October to December 2020, which makes it the quarter two report obviously, but really relates to last year. And I had to bear that in mind when I was reading it because I was reading it thinking some of this stuff is not quite correct. But of course it's not correct because we're now three, almost three months on from when it was written. But it is obvious that we've had a lot of work underway. We've got a huge number of big projects. Sixty-seven percent it says in the report of our key projects are actually in the delivery phase, which is quite demanding on our staff. And furthermore, forty-six percent of those do have substantial risks. So I think we all, it bears, you know, it's worth bearing in mind how much our staff are actually engaged in delivering complicated and, you know, expensive projects at the moment, just when we're thinking about our organisation and the capacity that there is there. Some of the good news in this report is our financial position is more favourable. We've had less expenses and slightly better income than we expected, given that we've had Covid, and our economy has actually bounced back relatively well. So some of the, yeah, so some of the people, and you know, a lot of us were concerned about the impact of Covid and what we'd be facing, although it has had an impact, it's not as bad as it could have been. Again, that's reflected in some of the KPIs, so we've had seventy-two percent of them have been met or exceeded. We have had some non-compliance, and the two main areas for that have been the social and recreation KPIs. Seven have not been met, and that relates a lot to the utilisation of facilities, so it is a Covid thing. Unfortunately, that's still happening to some degree with some under-utilisation of our facilities. Hopefully we'll see that pick up, be interesting to compare the next quarter report and see if that's, how that's trending. And of course, in the environment, we've had the all-the-water KPIs mainly, which is not a surprise. We do know that there are issues with our water infrastructure and, you know, some of the service levels haven't been up to scratch, and some of the data that's been kept needs to be improved. We're well aware, I think, of some of the shortcomings currently, but we're again looking to see them improve. And Lloyd did point out to me that actually we get a very fulsome report. A lot of councils don't get this level of detail. So I think over time, we are getting a very full sense of where our council is, where ratepayers' money's going, and how well we're performing in different areas, and how that's trending. So the report, we are being asked to receive the information, note the comments of the summary of performance, note the financial and performance measure variances, and generally approve the report. So I don't know who's seconding it for me, but councillor Calvert's going to second.
Councillor Calvert, would you like to speak?
Just very briefly, look, I just want to acknowledge the officers. We are on a continuous improvement journey in terms of our reporting, and I think sometimes we can't see the wood for the trees because there is so much information. But I do know that officers are working on providing a summary that is also useful for our residents, so, but I just want to commend them on working towards, you know, more simplified reporting. But it's a lot of work there and a lot of work that officers have achieved as well. So given the challenges that we've had coming out of Covid lockdown, so just well done, everyone.
Councillor Phone.
Yes, Kia ora, and I just want to make sure that we as a council are thankful to all of the thirteen hundred odd of our Wellington City Council team who are part of the foundation of this report being brought to us, to all of our CCOs and the teams that they employ, to all of the contractors that are employed, and to everyone who is working on operations and the projects in our city right now. And I agree councillor Free, there's a lot going on, so I think, yeah, just a little shout out to everybody. Please Barbara, if you could pass that on, that we appreciate it, that'd be great. Thank you.
Councillor Pannett.
Thank you, and obviously I'd like to repeat those thanks to all the staff who are doing so much amazing work. But look, I do think this still needs some improvements. Look, it's really clearly laid out, but I think we have a pretty major problem in that it doesn't actually look at the big picture and how we're doing. And if we're not tracking what we're doing in the big picture, it's really easy to kind of go, oh, well, we've done this, but actually we're not, we're not doing as much as we need to. So for example, in cycling, we actually need to be measuring how many cycleways we have built, and then we can track over time. It is not enough just to say we've done this little bit. And even if it doesn't belong in every quarterly report, it needs to be in the annual report. We're just not doing enough. On earthquake-prone buildings, really unhappy about that too, because we keep saying we're on track, we're not on track. We have got hundreds of buildings which are earthquake-prone, which are not going to be strengthened by their statutory timelines, and that's the information that governors should be getting, not that we're, just that we're issuing notices. So look, you know, in the interest of being constructive, I've got my catch-up with the CEO and want to just look at how we can do that. And I particularly am frustrated because, you know, we have a FAR committee where I wasn't allowed to raise issues around strategic risk, or it wasn't the appropriate time, or it wasn't the right paper, or whatever, and we have to look at risk. You know, it's absolutely critical, we've got so many big things coming at us. Same, I could say the same thing about social housing. Why have we got a green on that when we know that we've got significant challenges? You know, we're going to work on them, right, which is fine, but the commentary that comes along with that, I don't think is actually accurate. The other thing too is that let's do ourselves a favour. If we've got things like we're failing on drinking water standards, which made me go, oh my God, that was the thing we were doing well, then accurately report what is happening because it looks like we're failing on a very, very critical metric, which was going okay, and then suddenly it looks like it's not. So, you know, let's make sure that when we, let's give ourselves, let's back ourselves and say all the good things that we are doing, or why there might have been a change, that I think would be incredibly helpful. And just lastly, the continued challenges around the CapEx underspend is really serious when we need to spend a lot of money to make a lot of things happen in a short amount of time. So I think this probably needs a fuller discussion, not just at FAR, but by the whole of council. It is very, very serious, and instead of us just reporting on it, like, it's just sort of honestly, every month, every year, this is what's been said, it's time to crack up. But look, obviously there's heaps of good things here, and that's to be celebrated. Thank you.
Councillor Rush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, picking up on the contamination of drinking water, as portfolio leader for water, I felt that a broader explanation should have been offered, and I've got it. So yes, there was a power failure on the first November 2020, which was a Sunday, that resulted in the ultraviolet treatment facility failing, or tripping. Water that was contaminated ended up in the reservoir, but Wellington Water intervened swiftly, diverted all the reservoir water into the wastewater, and then reported it to Ministry of Health. So although, and I understand action has been taken to ensure it doesn't happen again. So a process failure, good response by the operator, no risk to public health. It has been submitted to the Ministry of Health, and we will wait and see what they have to say after they've assessed it. So just wanted to brief council on that because indeed it sounded very serious. Otherwise, I do agree with councillor Pannett, the monitoring and tracking dashboard of some description in order that we can have a high-level look at how things are tracking would be useful. But otherwise, awesome piece of work from the team pulling it all together, so appreciate it.
Councillor Fitzsimons.
Thank you councillor Rush for your comments about the issues around drinking water, but I'm a bit surprised that we're finding this out in that way, and that there's a report to the Ministry of Health. And yeah, councillor Matthews asked on Tuesday, there were other issues that asked on Tuesday. This is the first I've heard of a report to the Ministry of Health, and we've still got those unanswered aspects from Tuesday. So that's unusual and alarming that we don't know about that.
Sorry, as a portfolio leader, I briefed you on that probably about three or four minutes ago. There's a general update going out to you all to explain that.
Thank you. We'll keep the debate going now, but thank you, Tom.
I did, I did, yeah, I did actually want to raise issues, and I've sort of had to do some soul-searching about how to deal with the Island Bay cycleway because I'm turning into a person I don't like about this, very bitter, and someone who's kind of losing faith in public institutions because I've watched what's happened with the Island Bay cycleway, and I'm sort of sick of it. So I was elected back in 2017 on the basis that I would attempt to bring the Island Bay community together after the very divisive cycleway process and the Love the Bay process, which cost the council quarter of a million dollars. But ever since I was elected, I feel like I've been hitting my head against a brick wall in relation to the Island Bay cycleway. In other quarterly reports, it's been in red, it's also been in green, now it's in amber, but I, and which is confusing in and of itself. And I know there is a plan to deal with this in the future, and I want to come to that. But I thought, I think it's important for me to put on the record the frustrations that I've had, and to try and make it, make this council conscious that this is a very important issue that we properly communicate with the residents of Island Bay on, but also with the residents of Wellington. I thought when I was first elected, it would just be a matter of making it happen. There was an agreement at the final meeting of my predecessor as the Southern Ward councillor that the cycleway would be implemented, and there were six million dollars in the long-term plan at that time to do it. So I thought it was just a matter of kind of making it happen. But then the council seemed to go into some sort of state of constant indecision and deferrals. In October 2018, we were advised by ratepayers, advised by officers that we can save ratepayers' money if we do the Newtown connections alongside it. And it was described to us as a win-win. So I took that advice, you know, at face value, and promoted that as a better option for the community. But then we had options that came out for Berenpool, which were four options for cycleways. One of them took out a hundred and fifty parks, and one of them took out all of the parking along the sides of the street in Berenpool. That was thrown into the Berenpool community. It led to huge tensions, lots of division, and people who, the Berenpool Community Association, which had been a very good community association operating in Berenpool, was all of a sudden having the kind of meetings we'd seen in Island Bay, which were divisive and nasty and very tense because the council had to throw in this idea out there for a cycleway which would take out a hundred and fifty car parks. I've had people who were involved in that community association come and say to me they won't be, they won't be participating anymore, and that is because the council hasn't handled the cycleway conversation properly. I'm very challenged by the cycleway at Brooklyn Hill. I want to believe it's a good idea. I think we should trial these things out, and I want to be on the right side of cycleway issues because they're climate change issues, but this council doesn't make it easy. And I guess that's my final point, is that really I'm trying to move from a state of bitter frustration to constructive engagement, and I want to see the council do that as well. I want to see the council acknowledge that it got a lot wrong with Island Bay, that we need to do a lot better, and that there is a plan to do so. And I know that there's something in the long-term plan, but it's still not the previous agreement that's on the table. And I think if we are going to have any authority or legitimacy to deliver cycleway infrastructure around our city, we need to get Island Bay right, and we need to show the people of Wellington that we understand we made a mistake, we're happy to draw a line under it and move on. And that might cost more than we're comfortable with, but it will be worth it in the long run.
Thank you councillor Pannett.
Can I just, in the interest of trying to be helpful, I'm just wondering, I don't want to move amendments, but can we just fix that stuff around the water standards, the commentary? Yeah, I'm just a bit uncomfortable about it staying there, so I don't know whether the officers can just fix it. And there's also some other stuff around the water. Tom, you said that some of those reporting things around the water were annual rather than quarterly, so I just think we want to just get this right.
Actually, do you know what, we might, we might just adjourn the meeting and just have a quick conversation about how to manage a process because obviously the paper's been published, but it probably does need some sort of amendment to clarify. But let's just adjourn the meeting and maybe if Tom, maybe you could come and just... Sorry councillor Phone, I just want to make sure you are up with the play. Good, you've got some chocolate, it's good to have that. So we're re-adjuing the meeting, we have an amendment here that you can just have a quick read of, and if we can get with the leave of the meeting, then this amendment will be part of it.
When?
What you said.
No, I think it can be done immediately, yeah.
But just want to check, are people comfortable with that being...
I think we need the officer explanation because it's not, there's no public record of it. We all know because we sort of heard, but...
Yes, well, I don't actually know. Can we have, could you just give us an explanation on the difference with the statement to what councillor Rush has just said?
Thanks, just reiterating what's happened. The, there's been a power cut at the Waterloo plant resulting in the UV protection, thank you, the UV protection system tripping and cutting out, which means we do a thing at that plant called double barrier protection, so there's two ways of treating water. Firstly, there's chlorination and chemical dosing, but it's augmented with just basically UV taking the impurities out of the water, so the UV element is not working. They've immediately noticed this, so all the water that's not undergone UV protection or UV treatment has then been discharged to the wastewater system. So at no point has any water that's not been treated with the UV protection, at no point has any of that water gone into the network or gone to any of the residents or ratepayers. So actually, the system has worked really, really well in terms of them spotting this incident and responding. in terms of them spotting this incident and responding. What hasn't worked well is the manner in which we've notified the councillors. And I do offer apologies on that. And that is something that myself and Wellington Water need to take away to look at the comms.
councillor Fitzsimons has a quick question.
Yeah, my question really is, you said that it occurred because of a power cut. That seems like quite a, like that could happen again. What systems are in place to make sure that it's not, if it does happen again, there's a better backup or there's a proper notice between, like it doesn't just rely on chance or people noticing?
Yeah, so it's a monitored alarm system. So the fact it hasn't been working creates an alarm which they've noted. I'm unsure if there's any kind of emergency power or maybe an op. But safe to say that the system has tripped and is no longer working and there's been an alarm to reflect that. Whether there's like a source of power to keep it going and that hasn't worked. But what they've told us is they undertook an operational review as a result and have implemented some findings.
So can we just get a report on that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just, are there any other questions before we get underway? So we've got deputy mayor Frey and then councillor O'Neill and councillor...
So if it was at the YW2 treatment plant, presumably we're not the only councillor affected. So have other councillors been notified of what happened by Wellington Water or their reps?
Yeah, I don't know. I can't, really, that's a comment for Wellington Water. But in terms of their performance measures and their response to those performance measures, they're generally quite common across the councils and their responses are quite common. So I'd imagine the same response will have probably gone into a number of quarterly reports. But I don't know for certain, to be honest.
Okay, so we had councillor O'Neill.
Tom, can I just clarify when this happened? When Wellington Water noticed and when Wellington City Council was told about it?
So this happened in December, November. This happened in November. I'll have to really go away and find what methodology they used to notify us when we were notified. I knew about it through reading this report.
councillor Pannett, did you have a question?
So just to make absolutely clear, where the other areas of non-compliance are noted?
Yep.
Most of those are to do because they were year-end ones? Or can we just be absolutely clear? And I guess again, some assurances that they're trying to fix some of these issues?
So the majority of ones, I believe, I was told by Wellington Water, there were a couple of them that were annual. But the majority of the ones are where they've just exceeded. So when they've got a positive, sort of they've hit the KPI, they have not provided a response, a narrative. We've gone and got a narrative on each one of those ones now, which will be included. Yeah, and going forward, we've told them our expectations in terms of the narrative they need to provide against each of those measures.
And just to be clear, you would have sign-off on that? Just given it's kind of a bit sensitive?
Yeah, I would. And I guess this is my second quarterly report that I've done with you. First one, can't remember. This one, there's been some learnings for me in terms of the governance and oversight I need to do. So watch your space.
councillor Fitzsimons has a question.
Yeah, I just was going to ask, are you confident that Wellington Water are treating us with the respect that we deserve given our fundamental role within them? Because this doesn't feel like it.
Are they treating me and you like a $100 million client? We've got an improvement plan in place.
Good.
Thank you. Any other questions or you want to speak in the debate? Yeah, so thank you, Tom. Thank you for answering. councillor Matthews.
If anybody's watching this, I would just like to read out what we're talking about in the report. That Wellington Water Limited are forecasting non-compliance with drinking water standards for NZ 2005, revised 2008 Part IV bacterial compliance criteria for Wellington metropolitan area due to a process failure at Waterloo Treatment Plant. Now, when I was reading these papers at the weekend, obviously, when I see anything about drinking water, given recent events around the country, it set off significant alarm bells for me. And, you know, the post-it little note that I've put on here could actually just, you know, say WTF or something. But so I asked on our meeting on Tuesday morning what was behind this. And because that sort of meeting is, while it is public, there wasn't kind of public here, that, you know, the answer that was given was that it was about changing water standards and that, you know, like it was basically fine. And so I guess one of the, I've got lots of concerns about this. The first of all is that this happened in November and we have had multiple communications with Wellington Water, even specifically about the issue of drinking water safety, that have not mentioned that this occurred. And that is an untenable position to put elected representatives in, especially given the recent experiences in Otago. So I expect and demand on behalf of Wellingtonians better communication from Wellington Water about these issues. And we also need to maybe scrutinize what they are giving to us as well because this report is now public. And these issues, I'm very relieved to hear that there has been no compromise to the safety of our drinking water, but we should have been told when this happened in November.
Thank you councillor Conde.
Kia ora team. I'm actually not going to talk about water, so I feel like I'm going back to a completely different conversation that we were just having. But just wanted to address a couple of points that councillor Pannett raised in her coro. And I think, you know, acknowledging that the quarterly report is kind of a detailed management report about whether the staff are doing the work that we've given them to do. But I think that your point is that we need, as governors, a different type of reporting and that looks more about whether we're on track with achieving our goals that we're trying to get to. So I think it would be a great conversation for us to have at FARs and with the reporting team about how that fits in. That probably fits in closer to kind of the outcomes reporting stuff that we do around the long-term plan. But I think that's a great conversation that we should have with the right people to see if we can do something there. And just on the capex underspend, I think, I was wondering whether that might actually be a good topic, Barbara, for an ELT councillor briefing? Because I know that there's work happening in setting up the project management office that's targeting this kind of how do we make sure we deliver capex? I also know that there's work happening that Brad's leading in the transport space, looking at how do we work together with other councils to increase industry capacity so that we can deliver some of the big projects? So that might be one where it would be actually great for us to kind of hear some of the changes that you're all working on behind the scenes to make sure that in future, we're delivering better on that one.
Thank you. Is anyone else wanting to speak to the report? Deputy mayor Frey, do you have a right of reply?
I think there's certainly a bit to reply to. So I actually think that you have got a reasonable point councillor Pannett about we do need the time series and not just the time series of how we're tracking, but an absolute ambition that we're targeting to see how far short we're falling in absolute terms as well as how well we're tracking towards that. I think that's a valuable point. I was wondering why I hadn't picked up the bit about the drinking water. I see that actually it's quite vague in this report. So there's been some good points made about that. And while we're talking about that, I think it's also worth noting there are actually four measurements from Wellington Water where there's been no commentary received. Six and, or six. And that has made me worry because one of those was complaints about drinking water, water supply interruptions. But also we have things like wastewater reticulation blockages and some other measures. And now having noted that we've had no commentary, I kind of wonder what there is to say about those things. So it would be very good, I think, if our officers could actually follow up on that. You know, when I gave my introduction, I did acknowledge that there are some, you know, a lot of KPIs in the water space that have not been met. I also expressed some optimism that we were tracking towards improvement. I would like to maintain that optimism. But I think there's a lot of work to be done with our water supply and company. And I know we're not the only customer of theirs or owner, part owner, that is in the situation we're in. So, you know, there must be some pressure we can bring to bear to make sure we are on an improvement. And it's a little concerning to find out that not only did our staff not know until they read this report, but our political water oversight committee rep doesn't appear to have been fully informed either. So I think there's actually quite a lot of work to be done. So that was responding to you councillor Pannett. Councillor Fitzsimons, yes, I think we've all been, we have acknowledged to the Island Bay community that we haven't done as well as we could have with the Island Bay cycleway. There is a report coming to us with some options. I think it's in May. We've just had an email about it. There is obviously, you know, we are going to have to make some decisions about what we are doing going forward. And we need some clarity about that quite soon. I'm not as pessimistic as you are about the general loss of social licence in terms of going ahead with cycleways, but there definitely is something we have to fix in Island Bay somehow. And we'll be working on that. I don't know, there was a lot of other useful things were said. But, you know, those are the two points that stood out for me to respond to. I still think, you know, we've got a lot of information here. I'd like to look at past reports to see how they've been, the reporting methodology has actually changed. Because I don't know that we've got it quite right. There's a lot of detail and sometimes it's hard to see the big picture for the amount of detail. But anyway, this is, there's a lot in here. It's generally, I feel, quite reflective of a lot of good work. So I'll rest it with that and I trust we'll be voting.
All right, now that we have it moved and seconded, we will vote.